All right. We'll call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, March 22, 2021 at 6:30 PM. If you will all stand and we will have the invocation by council member Luke Orlando and our pledges by council member Carbone.
If you'll please bow your head with me in prayer. Heavenly Father, please watch over us tonight and allow us to make decisions that are pleasing to you. Watch over our city as we continue to battle and overcome the coronavirus pandemic and watch over our first responders and all of those who continue to serve the city in these very difficult times. And in your name we pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Thank you very much. And moving forward into our agenda, we, I can certify, we have a quorum. We have members Kamkar, Mayor Protem Hernandez online, all others, Member Orlando, Member Carbone, Member Little, and Member Owens present in the chambers. And Councilmember Perez will be absent from the chambers and absent from the meeting tonight due to family obligations. So, and do pray for his family tonight. So, if you would. With that, we're moving forward with citizens' comments. We do have several comments to be heard tonight, and the first two are going to be those that registered online. Mr. Jay Daggett is first up, so turn that over to Josh. Can somebody put the three-minute clock up so everybody can see it?
Mayor, Mr. Daggett is actually not on the, on the call.
Okay. All right. And we will move beyond that one. The next one we have is Ms. Kelly Moody. I know she was testing her mic a minute ago. Okay, Ms. Moody, you are unmuted now.
Great. Hello, I'm Kelly Moody, 3708 Pine Bark Court in Pearland. I am the current president of the Forever Parks Foundation of Pearland. Mayor Cole, council members, city administration and city staff, Parks and Recreation staff, I just want to take this opportunity to present to you the 2020 annual report of the Forever Parks Foundation and to thank you for your continued support with our ongoing contract and partnership. I hope you all received the annual report in your packet. And I just want to highlight a few things this year. Of course, you all know it was a challenging year, and it was a challenging year for us as a foundation as far as figuring out how to do virtual fundraising. Fortunately, our first project of the year was completed in April. That was the educational pond at the Dolores Fundwick Nature Center. That was a partnership effort with the Pearland Rotary Club. And one extra benefit we received from that project was to bring on Bianca Reed as a new Forever Parks Foundation board member. At the time we did the project, she was a president of the Rotary Club, and now she's currently our fundraising lead for the foundation. So, we're not only excited about the beautiful pond that's at the nature center, but to build that relationship with Bianca and utilize some strengths for the foundation as well. Most of our efforts this year went to the project that the foundation was created for in the first place. So, I just shout out to Michelle Graham and Mayor Cole for initiating this project. I know when you first talked about it long ago, you knew that the timeline would be at least six years to get things going, and that's where we're at. We're at the six-year mark thinking about this project, and we're excited to say that we've partnered with the Inclusion Matters of Shane's Inspiration, and we are hoping to see 3D renderings of the park this week. And when we get those renderings, we'll share them with you. The clock is ticking down fast. I didn't realize how quick three minutes was. So, I hope you can all read the annual report. Please let me know if you have any questions, and thank you so much for your support.
All right. Thank you, Kelly, and a worthwhile cause, and can't wait to see the inclusive playground done here. In fact, can't wait for two of them to be built so both ends of the city can have one. I just, as a matter of point of, I guess, personal or a matter of privilege, Mr. Daggett is saying he's trying to download WebEx. He doesn't have that software on his, on his computer. Without any objection from council, if y'all don't have any objection, do you mind, once he gets set up, lagging in and bringing him into the discussion? Okay. We have one more. So, with that, we'll move forward with Mr. Jeff Hunkle. Good afternoon, Jeff. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor Cole. Jeff Hunkle, 3912, Oakwood Drive North, Pearland, Texas 77581. First off, I'd like to thank Councilmember Hernandez and Keep Pearland Beautiful for coordinating the planting of a thousand trees at the John Hargrove Environmental Complex. It was a great day spent with my family with no interruptions by technology. I got to meet a lot of wonderful people, and it was a great day all around to gather as a community for the common good of the city. In reviewing Consent Agenda J, I noticed LJ Power Generators only listed daily charges with no breakdown of services rendered at each location. It also shows the same locations were visited multiple times. I would have liked to have seen a listing of all services provided similarly to the other agenda items to have a better idea of what was done and if any duplicate service was performed due to the recent winter storm, especially when the fire station, too, had a total of over $20,000 worth of services billed. For new business item number five, I was kind of shocked to see the city spending $53,000 for branding Pearland Water Services. This calls for logos, templates, and social posts, all to essentially repair the reputation of the water department. Is this really how we should be spending our money? I think this will do the opposite and irritate the citizens, knowing that the city had to pay for the Olson &amp; Olson Report, $98,000 for the Raftellus Report, and now $53,000 to repair the negative reputation that the city itself caused. There is a time and place for this, and this isn't it. Finally, for new business item number six, we are renewing a software maintenance contract for $141,000 with Tyler Technologies for software maintenance services. I see that they had given the city training credits for new and promoted employees. I don't know if this is an effective way to use training credits. Oftentimes, you are training the basics to people unfamiliar with the software, which could be learned internally or from the documentation from the vendor. I suggest sending the most knowledgeable people that use the software, so we call them power users. They gain a more depthful knowledge of the product, and they can internally train newer users by conducting presentation or lunch and learn seminars. During this time, they can also collect and submit questions existing users have to solve more complex problems. Dealing with computer software, I understand the need for support and maintenance patches, but it's the training that I question. When the water billing software was scrutinized, we were told staff didn't understand how to perform certain functions. So, I think it's necessary that we get to the bottom of the software that we have as well as new purchases. Thank you for your time and attention.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hunkle. We'll move on to our next speaker, and Mr. Daggett is online, Josh. Hopefully, he can hear and speak, but he's going to be my last speaker. We'll make sure he's all good and lined up before we get to him. Carol Arts Buchek. Welcome tonight.
Good evening. Happy March, happy Monday, happy City Council Day. My name is Carol Arts Buchek. I'm president and CEO of the Pearland Chamber of Commerce, and thank you, Mayor Cole and City Councilman, for allowing me to speak tonight. I want to tell you that we had an awesome March membership luncheon at Golf Crest, and Clay Pearson, city manager, was our keynote speaker. He did a great job. It was humorous, it was serious at some times, but mostly it was inspirational with his story about Sears Roebuck and something that we all need to pay attention to as a city and as a chamber. And then also, last week, on Tuesday, March 16, we took 16 courageous Pearland professionals to our state capitol. I want to thank Mayor Kevin Cole for attending with us, and we visited 72 legislators, taking them our public policy, which you have a copy of it tonight, a hard copy. My visits were all open. We got to visit with three actual legislators, but everyone else welcomed us into their offices. Not every office was open. Some of our teams had to just leave our gifts at the door. And then also, I want to ask, I guess, a question about the signage. I guess my head has been somewhere other than looking at signage, but last night we were coming home from after spring break, and along the Beltway, there's not any signage for Pearland. It's Lake Jackson and Freeport. And so, I don't know, we're the largest city in Brazoria County, why we're not recognized on the signage. In 2006 or '07, we took a delegation to TechDOT and asked them those same questions. They said at that time it should be the largest city and the county seat, but it's still Lake Jackson, Freeport. And I don't know what the rules are, and of all of the time and effort, our legislature, Representative Thompson, our city staff, I don't know why we don't have something that has Pearland on 288 or on the Beltway, the upper signage, the, I don't know what those are called. But anyway, just wanted to throw that out to you. But I thank all of you for your leadership and your guidance in this great city, and I appreciate tonight.
Thank you, Carol. Always appreciate your attendance and comments. Next, we'll move to Mr. Jay Daggett. Josh, do we have him on? Good deal.
Mr. Daggett, you are unmuted now.
Thank you so much. Mayor and City Council, please forgive my absence, as I would love to be there with you on this opportunity for us to be together again in the midst of COVID. And, oh, I'm sorry. Do I need to give you my address and all that stuff first?
Please do.
Thank you. 11601 Shadow Creek Parkway, Pearland, Texas. And so, again, gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to speak on this evening. Mayor Cole and City Councilmembers present, forgive my absence, this, the COVID pandemic, although we are now 100% open and maskless, still taking on precautions for my family and others in the event that I am non, you know, asymptomatic and transmissible as well. But thank you for allowing me the time to speak with you this evening. What I wanted to speak about specifically was the tremendous response and the great effort that was put forth during the, the winter storm Yuri that we just went through, and all of the incredible dedication that was extended to me by the city, by the mayor, by staff, by economic development, and everyone where I had and asked a specific question. And what I would like to pose is that in emergencies or in environments when we have something like that happen, I was very curious what we should expect of our elected representatives. I would love to have seen some engagement with how to do this or where to find this resource and where to do that. And now, having said that, I know there were, there were some communications that went out from, you know, with other people, but I can say very specifically, I saw the mayor a lot. I heard from the mayor a lot. I heard from Clay Pearson a lot. I heard from Councilman Orlando. I, there were a few people that indeed I did hear from, but on a go-forward, if there was a resource or a website or something other than the city website that contained a lot of great information, and as long as you know where to look, we were able to source that. In an emergency or at any time when we have something like that, I would surely like to see and/or hear from our elected representatives in a manner that is fitting the great city that we represent. And so, I'd love to have seen that. I know that this was an emergency, and it wasn't something that we expected or were prepared for to that detail, but I know, you know, once we know better, we do better. And so, that's what I'd be looking for on a go-forward. Thank you for this time, opportunity, and the audience. Enjoy the meeting this evening. I look forward to hearing everything that's on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Daggett. I don't, that's the last speaker that signed up to speak tonight, so we appreciate all of the speakers who came out tonight and were online for your comments, and we're moving forward in the, in the agenda, moving on to the consent agenda. I have received requests to pull item B as in Boy, E as in Echo, I as in Igloo, J as in Joke? How's that? There you go. And L as in Lima. Any others? Hearing none. Mr. Orlando, would you put the rest of those on the table, please?
Sure, Mayor. Consideration and possible action on the consent agenda items A through L, with the exception of B, E, I, J, and L. So moved.
We have a motion and a second. No debate on those issues. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero.
All right. Moving forward in our agenda, we will move to new business item number one. Consideration, excuse me, Mr. Carbone, would you place that on the table?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution R 2021-39. So moved.
We have a motion and a second. We're into staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. This item is for approving the multimodal master plan as a planning tool to complement the comprehensive plan. As part of our planning with a purpose, we're presenting the initial phase of this multimodal plan, which was developed in conjunction with the parks' master plan. This looks at our active transportation network, sidewalks and trails, and provides recommendations on providing a safe, efficient, and connected network of routes. We're going to have a presentation by Martin Griggs, Robert Upton, and Kerry Capers on how this ties together our planning, transportation network, and parks and trails. Hand it off to Martin.
Thank you, Trent. Had to get bumped up from attendee to panelist. So, thank you, Mayor and council, for having us and letting us discuss the multimodal plan for, from the agenda tonight. Robert, if you'll go to the next slide for me. Part of what makes this community so great is that we do plan for the future and that we take a very methodical approach when we lay out strategies and plans. That's why we That way we make proper investments. What you see on the screen before you is part of our Future With a Purpose that lays out the why, how, and what of planning, starting off with a set of strategic priorities and a community survey, leading into the actual plans themselves on how we get, you know, those, those big, bold concepts into an actionable item. And then it follows into the what being the capital improvements plan or some land use study or some staffing improvements. And all of this can be found on our Future With a Purpose website that's linked at the bottom of the page. Robert, if you'll go to the next one. So as I said, we start off with these big, bold ideas and we pair that with the community's survey through the National Community Survey. So on the left-hand side, you'll see the, the input and the output from the, from what the community and what we hold ourselves up to, where we provide those exceptional services, where the community has the trust and the respect and knowing that we will work as a team to, to provide services for the community. And then the community survey helps us figure out where we're, where our needs are and, you know, how the community is shaping. Robert, the next slide. So all of this feeds into our comprehensive plan. The last comprehensive plan was adopted in 2015, and we are currently working on updating that, and we'll have a proposal for a consultant to work with, with our planning division. And then we'll take, we'll go through the process with a community advocacy group and draft out a new comprehensive plan, hopefully towards the end of 2021 or the middle of 2022, depending on how our time schedules go. So a little background on the comprehensive plan. Our first plan was adopted in 1968. And as I mentioned, the 2015 plan is what we're currently under, and the upcoming plan is for 2021 and 2022. Typically within our plan, we have the following sections tying in with our discussion today on the multimodal plan. This really keys in on our lane uses, our parks, and our mobility. Next slide, please. So the multimodal plan will eventually be a, another screen cap that ties into this, this slide that is the, the current spread of the plans that we have with the city with our waste, our Water Master Plan, our wastewater plan, our Parks and Recreation Plan, and then the Pearland Prosperity Plan, also with the thoroughfare plan. So what the multimodal plan is going to provide us is those linkages in between the plan developments, the residential neighborhoods, and our points of interest. So that's going to be through our sidewalk networks, through our, through our parks plan, and it's going to provide us with some guidance on, you know, where we can improve and then where we can eventually tie investments into. With that, I'll hand it over to Robert, I believe, to walk through the, the rest of the multimodal master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Martin alluded to, this is a component of the overall planning with a purpose for our city. Taking a look at that with regards to the Trails Master Plan, having the multimodal master plan as a component of that, dealing with currently right now with trails, sidewalks, and linking those, what we call points of origin to destinations. So we'll walk through some of those, but it's to enhance what's been planned, what the vision has been captured, and continue to be able to move forward implementing that as we continue moving forward in a capital program and also working with developers and the Parks Department. So we had many key deliverables associated with this master plan, anywhere from a sidewalk analysis, a destination analysis that we'll show in a few minutes, taking a look at how we look at our proposed street sections and looking at those cross-sections on how we look at development and how we can then promote those 10-foot wide sidewalks or multi-use paths. And then taking a look at over 13 active transportation strategies. Carrie Capers, our Parks Director, Director of Parks and Recreation, will be taking, talking about those a little later, and then making sure as we head towards levels of service for the trail system. So one of the things that was done was an analysis of each of our subdivisions throughout the city, taking a look here at connection points and how we could see connectivity between subdivisions, connectivity to our major thoroughfares, our major arterials, our collectors, and how they network together, and then how those correlate back and forth associated with, as we develop and design roads. So those are points and opportunities for connectivity and be able to move people via pedestrian traffic or bike paths, et cetera. Another component is take a look with regards to our destination analysis. This included schools, commercial development, how we get to businesses, how we look at trail connections, how we can take a look at connecting those destinations there, how we can make trailheads or other parks, and take a look through an entire network. So these were his destination analysis, so we can start having some framework of how we connect things. And there we also took a look at a sidewalk phasing plan, taking a look at what we have in the CIP or the Capital Improvement Program, taking a look at those projects as we continue to move forward with the development of those. For example, as we work with Tech Dot for the expansion of 518 from 288 up through to 35 or in that general vicinity of the plan that Tech Dot is widening 518, to take a look there and what is 10-foot wide multi-use paths along that area and how those connect in with the items that we've done. Also putting together a long-range plan, which would take a look at five-year, 10-year, 15-year coinciding with what we are looking forward to in the Capital Improvement Program. Example of that would be in the Shadow Creek Parkway. We currently have a project underway that is working on sidewalk connectivity along with landscaping and street lighting. How do we incorporate all the trails that we've been doing on Clear Creek and tying those together? How do we then tie that sidewalk, sidewalk network to those trailheads such as to the library or to the recently completed Shadow Creek Ranch Park or Shadow Creek Ranch Trail that is along Clear Creek, and then eventually connecting to Shadow Creek Park and the construction activity there of expanding that park? And in conjunction with McCord Road, there will be one 10-foot wide shared use path that is required as part of the construction of that with Tech Dot, taking a look on the south side then to enhancing that as development occurs to have a network on both sides. So those are things that we're looking at. The other one with regards to our recently completed Bailey Road expansion, the county also has completed their expansion, and that also includes a multi-use path as well. And those are partly associated with Tech Stop partnerships. But then how do we take that network in our own projects and make sure it happens? And as I boldly mentioned here was taking a look through our CIP. So this is modeled after our, after our CIP program, Capital Improvement Program, and the projects that are listed there in the years associated so that we make sure that we coincide what this network analysis has done also with our streets that we're looking to rehab and making sure we gain the appropriate right-of-way and plan for that, that future. So we also took a look at street sections, and we'll go through all four of them. So we have our 80-foot major collector, taking a look at eight-foot wide sidewalks because this is able to put a four-lane road, have enough buffer between the road and the sidewalk and enough transition and back to natural grade afterwards. And also looking at our 100-foot wide thoroughfare, our secondary thoroughfare as it's called, with 10-foot wide multi-use paths. Continuing that on with a boulevard-style section on a secondary thoroughfare at 100 feet, still looking at the transitions, 10-foot wide multi-use paths. And then finally, with our largest cross-section is our 120-foot right-of-way secondary thoroughfare, which sets up wide medians, still four lanes, traffic, our buffer zone between that and the multi-use path, and then transition back to natural gear, natural grade. Again, this is our overlay associated with this, to be able to coincide those destination points, those major trailheads, where we take a look at where trails start, where minor connections are, where it may be a bench and a rest area, rest spot with a small shade structure, how these correspond to meeting those destinations of businesses, schools, parks, and how we can connect that together using what are plans that we have now and our plans for the future. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Carrie Capers, who is our Director of Parks and Recreation, and she'll start talking a little bit about levels of service as dictated in the report and the strategies associated with that. Thank you very much. Carrie?
Thank you, Robert. Good evening, Mayor Cole and City Council members. It's great to be here with you guys this evening and to continue adding a little bit more information about the multimodal master plan. As mentioned previously, the multimodal master plan and the Parks Recreation Open Spaces and Trails Master Plan, they were developed to support one another. So similar to the Park Facilities Inventory in the Parks Master Plan, the multimodal master plan provides an important analysis of our existing trail conditions. The pedestrian level of service is divided into four main categories: comfort, safety, ease of mobility, and convenience. Each category plays a very important role in the overall usability of our trail system. So the first category the plan looks at is comfort. Our trail should offer amenities that maintain a user's level of comfort when they're out using our trail system. When looking at comfort, the plan assesses and evaluates things such as the surface material, the trail slope, the maintenance. It looks at is the trail free from overgrown grass or weeds? Does it have hanging limbs or cracked concrete? It also takes a look at shade. Does the trail provide temporary relief from the sun so that, so that our users can, you know, find a place to recuperate and then continue along the trail? The second major category that they study, that the multimodal plan looks at is safety. Safety precautions, you know, it looks at what, dives into what safety precautions should we take to make sure that anyone out using our trail systems, that they're safe. And it focuses specifically on lighting, also barriers such as trees or bollards or strips of grass between vehicles and pedestrians and bicyclists. And it also takes a look at crosswalks. The third category that the plan looks at is ease of mobility. This can be described as the level of difficulty a pedestrian occurs when they're moving about one of our particular trail systems. The, the plan designates or mentions that the trails should be wide enough, but it can be shared with other pedestrians and bicyclists. Robert touched briefly on some trail projects or partnerships with Tech Dot previously and or that may be upcoming. The Tech Dot has a minimum requirement that all trail projects be at least 10-foot wide. And then wayfinding is another component that we look at as far as ease of mobility. And you see some examples of summer interpretive signage that also help to show intended destinations, and you'll see that on the bottom left-hand photo. The final category for pedestrian level of service is convenience. And convenience plays a pivotal role for just the casual walker as the destination, you know, for their main purpose of using the trail is to reach a destination. If the distance to destinations like parks or commercial retail centers or, you know, community gathering spaces, if it's a desirable walk, then they might actually choose to walk instead of driving their vehicle. And so as part of the pedestrian level of service, a conditions assessment was performed on all Pearlands trail systems. The conditions that the consultant looked at for the assessment included the following categories: trails and sidewalks, plantings, they looked at parking, trail accessibility, trail amenities, shelters such as pavilions or shade structures, signage, and also lighting. Robert, if you'll jump to the next slide, I'll show you what that, the results from those assessments look like. The scores for each facility, they follow the National Recreation and Parks Association standards, so similar to the, the facility standards in the Parks Master Plan. And they, for the, the trail assessments, they range from zero to four, with zero representing the improvements that are in the best condition or that are considered very good. So the composite score indicates the overall condition of the trail and in turn provides us with a means to compare the conditions of each trail relative to each other. So in general, based on this assessment, Pearlands Trail System is in very good condition, and it received an overall score of 1.5. The multimodal master plan's trail condition assessment breaks down our trail system into 19 different segments. This slide is an example of what you would see in the plan for each segment. So this example is Centennial Park, and Centennial Park received a one rating, which is good. The plan continues to provide us, in addition to that score, it provides us with those remedial recommendations such as, in the case of Centennial Park, adding benches with trees and also pedestrian lighting along the trail for enhanced security. Each section also includes the order of magnitude cost associated with each of those recommendations. The cost estimates that are provided in this plan are based on a $2020 values, but they also include a 10% contingency for inflation and just other unknown variables. In addition, they include a 15% fee. It was added for, to account for things like professional services such as surveying or design work or construction administrative cost. On the next slide, the, similar to the Parks Master Plan, the multimodal master plan provides a total of 13 strategies and recommendations. On this slide and the next slide, I've included all of the strategies just for your reference, but for sake of time, I'm not going to go into each one of them. Moving on to the next slide, what I want to show you is how we will take each one of those strategies and use that information, how that information is relevant to us and what the plan provides us for each of those strategies. And so looking at the multimodal strategy number six, this is to, the strategy is to develop a phased trail expansion program. So in conjunction with the remedial recommendations that were provided in the trail assessment, it's also recommending that we develop that phased expansion program, and then it provides us with the order of magnitude cost. You'll see there in the chart and a detailed map highlighting those exact connections. So it makes the process very simple to identify the work that we're doing. The next slide is the, is multimodal strategy number nine. And one thing that I wanted to mention in the, you know, I've made connections between the multimodal master plan and the Parks Master Plan several times. Many of these strategies are in both plans, and so this multimodal strategy nine can also be found in the Parks and Recreation, Parks Recreation Master Plan as strategy 3.1.1. So a lot of overlap there and cohesion between the two documents. This strategy is to, is to provide safe access to Pearland parks from adjacent neighborhoods. And when, the idea behind it is that when more, when parks are more accessible, more people will actively use them. And they, the, the plan makes reference to a, something very similar to Safe Routes to School that many of you may be familiar with. The NRPA developed a Safe Routes to Parks program, and that aims to, the goals of the program are to make parks more accessible for anyone walking or bicycling. And then it provides us with, in order to do that, some of the things that we need to take a look at like crosswalks or mid-block crossings or where applicable, including additional signage. And it tells us, it breaks it down into those specific trail segments and where we need to provide those enhancements. And then the next slide is the multimodal master plan strategy number 13. This strategy is to, is to ensure that the city's trail system provides respite and refuge for its users. So as outlined in the appendix F, which is the pedestrian level of service, several trails have been constructed recently in open areas with little to no shade. This forces our users to have to walk very long distances while they're fully exposed to the sun, and there's really no place to stop and rest in shaded areas. So this strategy actually provides a couple of recommended actions as well as the strategy. One of those actions is to amend the city's engineering design criteria manual to require a minimum bench spacing of no more than 1,000 feet. It also provides the recommendation to, in addition to the benches and the required ADA compliant concrete pads, it provides the recommendation to require concrete pads, it provides the recommendation to require a cluster of shade trees, three at a minimum that are planted in a triangular shape spacing around the bench. And it shows you exactly how those are laid out. And then the picture right behind that shows how, what that would look like on a segment of trail if we followed that guideline. So very, very useful information to help, you know, creating some plans moving forward. So with that, what's next? Robert, thank you, Robert. The, the next thing that we're going to do is we're going to establish a team of staff from multiple divisions within the city. We'll include folks from our Parks and Rec team, we'll include Community Development, Public Works, Engineering, and we're all going to come together and we're going to create a detailed action plan. We're going to use this information, break it down and determine exactly what is, you know, what we're going to tackle first and start planning those items out. We're going to separate these strategies out into short, mid, and long-term goals, and we're going to identify measurable targets to help keep this plan on track. Throughout the entire process, we're going to track and report on our progress. And we're also going to incorporate, look at what, what projects need to be incorporated into the city's capital improvement plan. And we're going to identify potential funding sources for various needs that are identified within the plan. And finally, we're going to go ahead and proceed with making the remedial recommended enhancements that have been identified in that site condition assessment. So that, that concludes our presentation. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Trent for any final comments.
Thank you, everybody, for the presentation. And, you know, this is kind of the first step in looking at multimodal. Just wanted to touch on an upcoming effort that'll, that'll kind of take the next step, which is HGAC through their Unified Planning Work Plan. We provided you a memo in January that they're looking at doing a Transit Needs Assessment for Pearland. And we are just about to have the memorandum of understanding in place for that. And then we'll come back to you for appointment to, for members to that steering committee as we move forward. So we'll hand it back to you, Mayor, for any questions, comments.
All right, so that completes your staff report. Moving on to council questions and comments. Councilmember Rollins?
Yeah. Turning to that picture that you have up here now, at Mary's Creek and the trail there, you got the bridge there and Alexander School, or the fifth and sixth graders are about 100 yards up past that. But I've noticed over there, when my granddaughter was there at that school, that people that live in the Baker's Landing, the kids walk on that sidewalk on the opposite side, which would be the west side of it there. The brush is very heavy in that area. And I really don't like the idea of fifth and sixth graders walking in that area when you can't see them when they're walking on the sidewalk through there. I think, you know, if we could, if we could do something about clearing some of that out through there, so they would be visible, you know, when that is there. The one other thing is a green tea trail. Be nice if we had more places that we could park to utilize that trail over there. But one thing that I did want to ask about, about that, when you use that trail, and I've used it a couple of times walking across and, and you go under Hughes Road, they're back behind our treatment plant over there. And if you look at that area over there, that's where the city used to have their picnics at. And the concrete tables and benches are still out there. You know, that, that might be a good thing to put a little footbridge across there and, you know, take part of that fencing back there to block off that area where people are going to do the walking on that trail, and it's about a mile long. They can go over and take a break, or they can do a picnic and kids, whatever they want to do. But you've already got the tables out there and you might as well get a use to them, but it's not that big of a deal to put a footbridge. You don't have to do that. I mean, you know, we had a deal with DD4 where they, the bridge into the park over here, that they were able to put that in there. So it might be something working with them. They may actually put a little footbridge into there and then we can fence it off to where they can't get up to the treatment plant or anything. But that's a pretty long trail. It's really a nice, nice trail. With all the animals we got out there, I told them they needed to take it to the running track and not the walking trail. You know, we've got alligators, we've got wild hogs, we've got bobcats out there, and we've got coyotes. And so I wouldn't, but, but anyway, that, that's the two things that, that I had. Maybe we could use that area where people would take a break and, and go in there to sit down or whatever. And it probably wouldn't be a bad thing to look at. America, that's, you know, you can't, you can't, there's no place out there. And if you go in Promise Village up there, they got the chain across that deal. So you can't go in and park two cars there. But then down there where we had, you got what, five, six parking places? You got about four big rocks left, still got the wire around it that hadn't been moved yet and put in place.
Sure, and I, just so the public knows, we do have some spots at the Lowe's in their parking lot next to the trail that, that have been designated and they've allowed to be used for the trail system. And then, of course, in the future segments of the trail as we head towards Clear Lake, U of H Clear Lake Campus, we're planning on additional parking in that next segment.
Any other comments or questions from council?
I just got one quick one there. Do we have a handle yet on the economic impact of the freeze on our parks as far as plants lost, trees lost?
I'm sure we've been doing some looking and assessing, but I'll ask Carrie if she can elaborate on that.
So the damage that we, the damage to a lot of the-
Real quick, I just want to make sure that that's not deviating from the multimodal plan, Darren. I, I think it's a great question, but I, I just want to make sure we're not deviating.
It is a good question, and maybe staff can just follow up with that information. And since we're specifically talking about multimodal tonight, we can go and get that information, provide that to council.
I think it's a good question that we need to know.
Absolutely.
There is a lot of damage out there. Any other comments, questions?
So, so tonight we're approving the multimodal plan. How, how does that, I guess, interact with a thoroughfare plan?
So basically, when we build thoroughfares, we're incorporating either mixed-use paths and, and/or a combination of sidewalks, really what, depending on the right-of-way available and the configuration of the road and the cross-section, what we can fit in there to accommodate both types of, you know, bicycle and pedestrian traffic is included in all of our thoroughfare plans. So as Robert was talking about, developing out the road network, a lot of these connections and sidewalks will get built through that process.
I guess from a, we haven't seen the thoroughfare plan yet recently, have we?
No, sir, we've got a minor update that'll be coming to you here in the next month or two. And then we're looking at, once we have the new census data, to do a full thoroughfare plan and, and, and mobility plan update with the new figures as well as new traffic modeling.
And we'll go back and update the multimodal plan if there's any major changes in the thoroughfare plan? Or how, I guess?
I would, I would say we just, I mean, I don't know that we're going to see any major relocations or anything like that of roadways. We might see a reconfiguration of priorities. And I think we just follow that, you know, through the multimodal plan and just adjust the priorities in the multimodal plan.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Orlando?
Yeah, I just wanted to first say, thank you for the, the presentation. This document's very dense and it includes a lot of really good material, not just on the trails, but just, it really improved my understanding of a lot of, kind of the grid of our roadways and where, what does the distribution of accidents look like across our city? So I think this is a really impressive document and something that's going to be a really good resource going forward for all of us and a lot of decisions that we make. So appreciate that. It's also, it's kind of hard to remember with the crazy last year that we've had. But typically, transportation is the most important issue facing our residents, whether that's in our surveys or just the feedback that we're getting. So again, I think this is a really good proactive step to addressing that and greatly appreciated from me at least. I just had two quick questions. One is in terms of, you know, there are these recommendations for improving these, for improving these trails. And something that we discussed was, you know, we can get more use out of our parks if they're more accessible, if these trails are more desirable to, to be used. I guess what, and forgive me if this was included in the document, like I said, it was pretty dense, but I'd appreciate just zeroing in on this. What is our mechanism for evaluating whether the changes that we make have the desired impact? And we, you know, we make a change on a given trail. How do we then assess if, if we got more use out of that trail?
Do we have any volunteers for taking that one?
I can, I can take that one. One of the things that, that I mentioned previously and that the plan mentions is that the National Recreation and Parks Association sets standards. And so we can evaluate our trails on those to make sure, you know, periodically to make sure that we're meeting those standards and, and update our scores. In addition, from time to time, we work with HGAC. They'll provide us with trail counters and we're able to monitor the attendance, number of visitors to our different trail segments. And so we monitor different segments annually to make sure that, you know, we have a good idea if the, the work that we're doing is improving that usage.
Got it. No, I appreciate that for sure. It's certainly a big investment and, and of course, not, not everything has the clearest ROI, but I think in terms of being able to see the results, so that's really good. My, my second and final question is just, I, I guess I just wanted a little bit of discussion on, you know, as we talk about in our budget workshop and in a lot of our different meetings about this huge long-term maintenance challenge that Pearland is facing, that a lot of cities, a lot of suburbs, and especially rapidly growing cities are going to experience in the coming years and decades. How do we, what are kind of some things that we could do to minimize the long-term costs associated with putting down a significant amount more in trails? You know, like we saw various types of trails, whether that's the granite, the crushed granite versus the cement. I guess I'm just wondering if there's any kind of thought as to, you know, maybe this crushed granite is less desirable in some ways, but we can be confident that it can be maintained at a higher standard because the maintenance costs are, of it are going to be lower. I guess I just wanted to know kind of what the thought was around those considerations.
But I'll maybe start out and then Robert and Carrie can chime in. But, you know, we look at, you know, where it's going a lot of times. You know, if we're going in a, in a drainage district corridor and they're going to run heavy equipment in there to maintain their stuff, we've got to have something in there that's going to last. And so we look at the concrete cross-section, make sure that's very robust and is going to last a long time and going to be able to handle that type of traffic. And then, you know, the, all the decomposed granite trails, you know, the upfront, front cost are a lot lower. You know, they, they do require a little bit more annual attention. And, and we've also made improvements on the standards for those as well, where we've made sure we've got the concrete curves that really hold the, the decomposed granite in place so that that, it lessens that. But again, each of them come with their different maintenance requirements. And we try to build robust infrastructure that, that is going to last. And, you know, we got to look at the places where it's going to, to make sure we're putting the right thing there. So, well, if Robert or Carrie has anything to add to that.
Councilman Orlando, Trent has eloquently put that together correctly. You know, for example, we're rehabilitating three parks with a decomposed granite trail that has lasted a long time. However, without the borders that we're putting in now that we've learned from the trail around John Hargrove Environmental Center, we're seeing great return on that investment. And so we've taken that continued aspect to be able to keep the DG or decomposed granite inside a concrete border with a fabric underneath or a weed barrier, so we don't get those weeds growing up. And that has had success. Also, from an athletic standpoint, I'll say from my own personal, back in the day, because my weight now does not allow it, but kind of had that growth there. But is, running on concrete is a lot more stressful on the knees. And having the ability to run on decomposed granite and the trail system in that respect really does help out. And so I would say that it's a combination of both investments. As Trent said, along the, the drainage basins and the cross-sections there, we thicken up the edge to handle the, the equipment that our counterparts at BDD4 will drive across and continue their mowing, looking for longevity there, working with them. But like I said, in the three parks we're doing right now, makes perfect sense from a longevity standpoint to take a look at decomposed granite.
Carrie, maybe you can touch on the different types of users and what type of the different surfaces.
You know, I would just echo everything that, that both you, Trent, and Robert said. It is all very true. There is a, you know, there's, there's a big difference between the two different types of trails between the maintenance that is required. The concrete paths are by far the easiest type of trail for us to maintain. The decomposed granite trails are a little bit softer on the knees, however, do require a weekly maintenance to those trees to keep with the edging and the, the overgrowth on those trails. We work continuously to identify the most effective strategies to where we can figure out how to maintain trails faster and more, more efficiently. And then also we look for different partnerships whenever possible when new developments are coming in. If there's opportunity there for the developments to also help provide some of the maintenance to those trails.
Appreciate all that context. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Hernandez, you had you, you were unmuted.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So you talked about possibly going back and amending the design criteria, Carrie. What is the current criteria? I think you were talking about the benches.
Robert, do you want to speak to a little bit about what the, the design criteria is in the park plan?
Is that question specific to the distance between park benches, Member Hernandez?
Yes, sir. Just curious what we would be changing, amending.
We would, Councilman Hernandez, in the Engineering Design Criteria Manual, it provides a level of spacing and some amenities along the way. This helps solidify and narrow that up so you can have more park benches and not, and set and increase the number that we would have. So I can't recall right now, and I'll get back with the council with regards to exactly what that distance is under the current standard. But this would then be reducing whatever that requirement is down to 1,000 feet and looking at those reliefs from there. But I don't recall right now what that is, but I'll get that.
Yeah, totally fine. All right, I appreciate that. And then related to the benches specifically, I know this has been brought up multiple times previously, but on the, the pricing of the benches, I think we had mentioned the potential partnership with TDCJ. And I think there were some restrictions there because of federal rules around dollars being spent. And if there's federal money, you can't. But how much of our trail system is eligible for a potential TDCG, a TDCJ partnership to kind of implement some cost savings if we were to go down that road?
Councilmember Hernandez, I would have to get back with you with that specific information.
That's totally fine as well. And then another question I had is, this has kind of been brought up here very recently where we've talked about some potential, are going back and looking at the UDC and looking at potentially creating more of these walkable center-type developments over time in the city. And just making sure that as, as we have those discussions, that gets kind of baked into what we're looking at here as well as we look at potentially putting in denser residential with mixed-use, things like that. Just make sure that we have access to those as well and connecting those to the trail systems, I think, would be good. And then to what, I remember Orlando said, I wanted to bring something up that, again, these are kind of one-off conversations, but I think this would be good to help track the usage as it would increase over time. I think there are other things that we can do. I know we've talked about potentially moving to more interactive signage along the trail systems. I think that what Katie is doing in the Parks Department with her Educati series, trying to find a way to better implement that into our trail systems where people can potentially scan codes to bring up her videos about assets they could encounter or things that they could encounter, wildlife on that trail system, and giving an opportunity for people to check in would also give us a better way to track usage. But I think there are other things we can do with Parks Department, other nonprofits, and just make sure that we have these such as tracking litter, receptacle usage, the dog waste bags that are long trail systems, cigarette butt receptacle usage, all of these things, just making sure that those are kind of baked into how we're tracking an increase in usage, I think, would be good to just kind of make sure that that's at the forefront of discussion. But that is all I have on this. I think it's a great document. I think that having our city expand its access, not just the parks, but, you know, I think that having our city expand its access, not just the parks, but, you know, being able to to commute from from one part of the city to the other, whether that's even to a local grocery store or something like that, is going to be super important as we continue to grow. So thank you for all of your hard work.
Member Kamkar?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Assistant City Manager Upson, you made a mention earlier about HDAC partnership and dollars. Is this going to be a source document that's going to guide Pearland spending as well as going to that HDAC blunder for funding?
Yes, I think this document will support any local spending we do, any projects we take on, as well as any projects we submit for outside funding.
Okay, so then if we don't approve this document or we need revision to that, how does that, how does that work? Does that take us out of the HDAC bucket if we don't do the the set? Or how does that interaction work with this document? Are there certain standards they're asking us to do? Or is it just saying that we have a planning tool, whether it's a good planning tool or a bad planning tool?
So typically in any call for projects for for that type of funding, there's kind of the the preliminary things you have to have in place as you make that application. And many times that is, is it in your thoroughfare plan? Is it in your multimodal? Is it in your trail plan? That's kind of the first checkbox you have to have as you, as you move through those funding type of mechanisms. I'm not going to say it's always required, but it often is.
Okay, I just want to understand what what this tool is going to be used for later on. Question, there's a lot of trails sidewalks to have cost associated, some 400,000, some 300,000, some less, some more. You know, whereas, you know, especially sidewalks has been a major area where we don't fund those because we have more bigger priorities, I would say. How do we anticipate incorporating that cost? Where's the revenue stream to help assist with that cost?
I think, you know, one of the things in the next steps we have right in front of us is, you know, is try to identify funding strategies. You know, part of that's going to be, you know, do we do part of our trail system to a bond package? Do we have partners as we try to complete the Clear Creek Trail System and tie into some of the Harris County parks? You know, is there something we can do to enhance our sidewalk program to where we're not just trying to catch up and repair existing sidewalks, but we're filling in some of those gaps that exist out there today? So, you know, it's going to be a multitude of things and, you know, we may not be able to fund everything we want to, like we can't always fund everything we we try to or want to, but it's a tool and it's a plan to help prioritize those things as we move forward and we have revenue and we have sources to fund.
And the reason is, is I asked on page 75 of the document of the PDF or page 67 internal of the document, multimodal strategy number four is establish sidewalk implementation partnerships. And I want to read this for the benefit of the public. Establish partnerships with independent school districts and developers whereby with all new development, i.e. new schools, new residential subdivisions, the development entity will be responsible for constructing, constructing the portion of the sidewalk as I've been map 17 sidewalk phasing program. So let me, let me just, as has always been told to me, we're at like 94, 95% built out. I don't, I don't know that we're going to find the space. We had the gentleman from Solomon Brothers come in here, I guess, last Monday night, and they were not too keen on doing anything outside of building homes. And so they didn't want to dedicate a park, they didn't want to do anything. And so I'm just, I don't know that we're building any more schools inside here. And so I just need to be a realist on where are we going to find the dollars to do this? So that would, that's a real question mark that is standing out there in terms of me giving approval on this is is finding dollars to go and do this. I don't know where those are now. That's incumbent on us to find those, but approving a document and then saying six months from now, we'll find the, we'll find the money later is it's a cart and horse a little bit. So. What are my other notes? On page 50 of the thoroughfare plan, internal to the the PDF, sorry, you have a 10-foot sidewalk in the cross-section. Is there an example out there for the general public or for the members of the council to think what a 10-foot sidewalk looks like? I think that's a bigger number in terms than than what is in my profession as a real estate developer. If I'm above six feet, that's a big sidewalk. And so is there an image that we can tell the people and say that's the size that we want to use?
Sure, so we've got several of those. Bailey, that's a 10-foot and we call them a mixed-use path. And it's, it's really a minimum, that's a minimum requirement for your mixed-use path. So it's supposed to accommodate not only pedestrians, but but your bicycle traffic. We also have it on Cullen, north of 518. We have it on Pearland Parkway between Dixie Farm Road and Euler. And then it's also included in the McCord Road Project. So really, if you go back probably 10 years, any of the roadway projects we've been able to fund with with federal transportation dollars are going to, you're going to see that 10-foot mixed-use path on those roads.
Trent, does Magnolia also fall into that?
I believe Magnolia's got six foot on both sides.
And the point I'm just trying to illustrate is this is going to be a maintenance nightmare over the next 10, 20, 30 years. That's a big sidewalk and the rehab and the reconstruction on that, we're struggling with sidewalks in the 1960, 1970, 1980 standard. A 10-foot sidewalk is going to be a big M and O piece that we have to think through. For City Engineer Upton, are the cross-sections that are provided, how far do those differentiate from our current standard as to where we are today with the engineering development manual?
Councilman Kamkar, I'll go ahead and flip back a little bit to those so that we'll use this section here. So with our current standards right now, what we have is we have only six-foot sidewalks that are laid out in our current cross-sections in the engineering design criteria manual. So that allows more space, we'll say, from the edge of sidewalk back to the right-of-way line. This allows the additional use associated with that extra space for conversion to sidewalks. Of course, as always, as Mr. Upson also stated earlier, is that we're looking at these in conjunction with the thoroughfare plan, with conjunction of the multimodal plan, and also what right-of-way space is available to be able to fit everything in too as well. And we have to also take a look at that in in conjunction of all those tools. But what is utilized in, for example, both of these cross-sections is a little bit of the annular space on the outside to gain the appropriate footage in this, in the sidewalk.
I think maybe to put it in perspective, a lot of times based on the cross-section of the road, the adjacent properties and the elevations of those, these are going to be a goal. But if you take a look at like Cullen, we were able to get the 10-foot sidewalk on one side, there's really not room because of the elevation of the road compared to the adjacent properties to get it in on the other side. And we also made conscious decisions where we would maybe put it on one side and then because there's no development on the other side, allow the development as it comes through to put in that sidewalk on their property or on their landscape easement as they develop.
Let me ask you a question. The plan consummates the idea that we're going to have Text Dot do the right-of-way along 518 or Broadway in that we anticipate putting a 10-foot sidewalk on each side of those of the street? Is that correct?
So Text Dot will actually build that with the roadway. And what we're looking at right now is a 10-foot mixed-use path on one side. And I believe they're at a six-foot sidewalk on the other side. They're, they're just, that's one of the instances I was kind of just talking about is where we have to look at what's actually out there and what can we fit within the right-of-way and what makes sense.
So can you, can you say that in more English just for the public? So Text Dot's going to go tear up the road? And what happens then with the sidewalk? Just for the general public to understand what they're going to do and then what we have to go do to enhance.
So as part of the 518 widening project, Text Dot will convert the existing four lanes with the continuous left-hand turn lane to a six-lane, three lanes in each direction, raised median boulevard. And on one side, they'll have a 10-foot mixed-use path and the other side, they'll have a six-foot sidewalk.
Okay, so then we, in this instance, then if we wanted it to be on both sides of the road, we would have to push for the extra four feet and then we would have to maintain the 10-foot on both sides of Broadway. Is that correct?
That, that is going to be Text Dot's requirement to maintain, that being in Text Dot right-of-way. And then, and being able to expand the one from six to 10, it's, I don't, most of the right-of-way, we're really struggling just to squeeze everything in there that's, that's planned. So I don't know that you could squeeze an additional four foot.
But will Text Dot be maintaining the sidewalks or just the right-of-way?
I would have to just confirm with with our personnel that oversee that, but I believe like the roadway, they would maintain both. But we'd need to check our manu, maintenance agreement with them unless Robert knows off the top of his head.
I'm going to have to defer to take a look at that agreement, but from the intent that we have on example on Cullen, they would maintain those sidewalks. But I need to confer, as Trent says, we need to just confer through our maintenance agreement.
Sure. On page 75 of the document is the neighborhood entries. And for the general public behind it, there's probably three pages with 20 to 25 major entries off the streets here in Pearland. Is there a cross-section or a model to guide what that upgrade would look like? Or is this just kind of the wish list of every entry and can we fit? Do we have enough width to go in and put a median there? Can we talk about that for a moment?
Which page of the document?
I believe it is page 75 of the document. Sorry, a page 81 of the PDF, it's behind multimodal master plan appendix A. So I just trying to understand, so as as part of this multimodal plan, are we advocating for putting a raised median at the entrance to every ma, every subdivision in the city?
I mean, can you restate the question? I want to make sure I understand.
So we have on page 81 of the PDF or page A2 of the internal document, the subdivision entrance inventory. One of the items was to put some medians in there. We've got so many communities, small little neighborhoods. Is the intent to put a raised median kind of like what you have on the screen with a little rail in the middle with green space and a tree? What is the intent on that?
So I found the subdivision entrance inventory. I don't see where, where it talks about adding medians. So, I mean, maybe we can take a look at that. If you want to send us the specifics of that, we can further answer that.
Okay, that's fine. All right, page, let's see here. Page 76 of the document, multimodal strategy number eight. Is this document advocating as as a strategy that we adopt mass transit? Let me, let me, let me read out multimodal strategy number eight. Begin to plan pedestrian improvements associated with the future public transit program. Initiatives and actions, quote, design prototypical bus transit stop to determine areas like quote unquote footprint requirements and how these buses would be integrated into the sidewalks and street scrapes of principal intersections and other intermittent mid-block bus stops along a potential route.
So I think that recommendation assumes we have something in the works or something that's coming down the road with that and we really would not prioritize or or make that recommendation a reality unless there were something there.
Okay, so can we amend this document to take that out?
So Trent, if I can just add, one of the, one of the recommendations from the consultants as we are going through this process is to take a look at this document being a, you know, looking down the road, potentially 20 years down the road and what the types of things we want to start considering or planning for at this point. It's not saying that we would start implementing those or anything at this point, but just starting to put it on our radar. And so we are ready, you know, possibly 20 years down the road when the time comes.
I'm generally uncomfortable. I think buses can stay in Houston. I haven't ridden a bus unless I go to New York or LA or San Francisco. And I'm, I think we already have enough, enough traffic on the main thoroughfares. Adding buses, I don't believe it is the answer. And this is going to be a guiding document, as was said by Mr. Upson earlier. I'm generally uncomfortable with approving a document that includes buses as part of the future Pearland.
Does that conclude your questions, Mr. Kamkar?
The only other thing I would say is I think this document as a whole is good. I just, I think the funding piece is not defined. I think that this is a consultant-driven document. I think that we need to really iron out how we anticipate and work with that. The, the transit thing bothers me. So I would make a motion right now to table so we can have further discussion on this item before we approve this resolution as a guiding document for Pearland's future.
Have a motion to, well, motion would be to postpone that table.
You know, I think looking at this and Alex said, I think you're right on on it. Going back and looking at the, what we're looking at now, those six steps that need to be done. I would hate to go in and say that, you know, council approves what has been submitted tonight and let's get down the road and find out, you know, we're not getting HDAC on there, we're not getting Text Dot in there and we don't have the money to do it, to do it. But it seems like on, on the, as it showed a while ago, there's six steps that need to be done on there. I'd rather wait till we find out that and, and maybe have some kind of a dollar amount that this would be in order to do that. I mean, I don't know. I don't know where, you know, 120-foot right-of-way, how many more roads that we have that we can go 120-foot right-of-way, to be honest with you. North, south, and not many left on, you know, east, west on there.
And so, yeah, that goes back to our existing thoroughfare plan. And this doesn't change that. This just identifies, you know, what would be a goal as we move forward, providing those. And of course, these are, you know, strategies to implement as, you know, it makes sense. And, you know, it does have dollars tied to recommendations in here and the, and the improvements that are proposed. But of course, those still have to go through all of our budgeting processes and, you know, trying to find those funds, outside funds as as we can before, you know, we can actually
I just wanted to go ahead and interject if you don't mind. Given the fact that we did have a motion to amend and before we proceed with the discussion, we need to clarify whether or not there's a second.
I heard, I heard no second, so that's
Okay, I just wanted to clarify if
to move on. No one has seconded the motion to table it. So that's where, that's the reason why I'd actually like to put this in context with a couple of questions if I can.
Sure.
So if if I understand this multimodal plan, it is just that is it's a plan, just like our thoroughfare plan, just like our parks master plan, just like our comprehensive plan. And if I also understand this will move up underneath our overall comprehensive plan. So our comprehensive plan will be a kind of a one-stop shop. All of our plans are there, including parks master plan, thoroughfare plan, zoning, future zoning, all of those kind of things flow into that one document just like this. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So which which then goes to Councilmember Carbon's question about, you know, making, where does all this fit in together? Well, it fits together underneath the overall comprehensive plan. And since we're going out to update the comprehensive plan, this is a piece that gets added to that as we move forward, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so in each one of those other plans, parks master plan, even our water wastewater planning, thoroughfare plan, everything else, is there a defined funding mechanism in each one of those plans?
For all the projects and recommendations, no, sir.
No, so again, so all of those plans do the same thing. It comes up underneath It comes up underneath ultimately, all of that flows to the capital improvements plan, the CIP, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so this is this is just another piece of the puzzle from the actual plan. What ultimately gets planned, there's no, just like the thoroughfare plan, just like all the other plans. There is no, you must fund this this particular year, regardless if we have HGAC funds or text dot funds or anything of that nature. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so this is just another piece of the of the planning puzzle, if I see it and understand it correctly. And and I, you know, I think, you know, we if this recommends or has a component to a mass transit piece, does that lock our hands into doing mass transit?
No, sir, we'll we'll have to, of course, make all those decisions as as down the road as those opportunities present us or don't present to us.
That we had up there a while ago showing the footbridge over there off Old Alvin and then the six steps that need to be done on there and take a look at those steps.
Put your last slide up, Robert. I think it's slide twenty-three.
Yeah, that one you've got, you know, the next steps is a planning retreat and action plans and things of that nature identify funding. I don't want to get in the situation where if it's if it's approved tonight and say two months down the road, comes back with something else and it says, well, council on March twenty-second, y'all approved it, you know? So I hate to prove approve anything without, you know. I mean, I think it, I think all of this is a good plan. I just think us approving it tonight is
So this this is very similar, the same next steps we had with our parks master plan where we said, we'll take this document and all the recommendations out of it and start formulating detailed action plans moving forward. And where we've got some of the conditions that can be addressed within our current operating budget that are deficiencies and minor things, we'll we'll address those. But to be able to go do any major projects, that has to go through the budgeting process. That has to be presented to you in the annual budget or be part of the capital improvement program and has to have a funding source to move forward. So there's no, you know, there's nothing approved here to where we would come back and say you've approved a project. It's it's got to go through the budgeting.
We did, we did the same thing with our parks master plan back in what, January?
Yes, sir.
It was an update to the parks master plan. Now, this one, is this the first, this is the first time we've had a multimodal plan, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, but we've had a master trails plan for decades.
That's correct. We've had a master trails plan and this really just kind of really takes that and makes it much more robust with our sidewalk network, making sure that we don't just have a standalone trails program or project. We're making sure that people have access to that trails program, have access to our parks by connecting all the other points of interest in neighborhoods. And that's, that's why we took the approach of a multimodal plan with this approach as opposed to just looking at the trails network.
Member Kamkar, you unmuted, so you've got a question.
Just to ask a question, so if we approve this this evening, will the staff make the recommendations to change the UDC to align with this document?
Martin, are there UDC things in this document that would drive future UDC amendments?
As far, thank you, Councilman Kamkar for the question. As far as I've seen out of this document, there are not immediate UDC amendments. However, if we do end up in discussions where there are things that this plan recommends, such as increasing the sidewalk widths or changing or adding a language that allows for different sidewalk widths, then of course, that would be something that we could take as a UDC amendment. But this plan, as it stands, does not trigger the necessary UDC amendments.
So strategy one and two on seventy-five, page seventy-five of the document mentions changes to UDC. You guys will not move to go and do those right away?
Again, part of the next steps with the planning retreat and the actual coming up with our action plans, this is where we will take the plan, discuss it and figure out exactly what the feasibility is and what connections are necessary and whether those connections that are proposed within the plan make sense for the community as abroad because the unified development code is for all of the city, not just for a specific place or a specific property. But it's something that we'll have further discussion.
All right, I don't have any further comments. I'll I'll make the motion one more time. I'd like to just make a motion for us to postpone this discussion for thirty days. I think there's some unanswered questions on the funding source. I think there's some unanswered questions on what this triggers right away. And the transit piece still bothers me, just to be frank. So I would ask for a second, but if I can't get there, I can't get there.
You know, on this one, it's on that number four incorporated capital improvements plan. I mean, we can put it there, but then the council's got to put a priority on the capital improvements of what what it would be, you know? I don't want to be planning on something or the staff planning on something or whoever to come in and say this is a part of the capital improvement program and we can come in and take a look at it and say, well, this is not a priority, this 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 two projects, three projects here. And, you know, and located is detailed in there, you know, with other things incorporated in it. I I think it, I think it's a good plan, but I think it's too early to do it. We don't know, we're we're proving our wish list that we have no idea how we'd even pay for if it went through and how long it would take to do it.
That's just like any any road project that's on our thoroughfare plan. They may be proposed to be added to the capital improvement program, but they're not added unless the council adds them and unless there's a funding source to add them. So this would be the same.
Second, member Kamkar's motion, just so we can get this, we'll vote to either we postpone it or we don't postpone it so we can just move forward. Sounds like there's a lot of questions left to be answered and we're going to be here all night. So I'll second his motion and move to call.
There's a motion in a second to postpone this this particular vote for tonight. I don't believe that's debatable, so let's
So mayor, just for clarification, this postponement would be for thirty days or is this just to a future meeting?
That was the motion.
Thirty days?
And Councilmember Hernandez seconded it. So so with that, let's vote on the postponement of Adam Secretary.
Member Kamkar? Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Little?
No.
Member Perez? Oh, sorry, member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
No.
Member Kamkar? Member Carbone?
Already voted.
No.
Motion fails four to two.
So we're now back to the regular motion. And I believe Mr. Hernandez called for the question, does that require a second?
That requires a, it does require a second and then it requires a super majority vote to, because it essentially ends debate.
Is anyone disputing though, just bringing it to a close?
No, I was going to ask, I don't see any other comments or questions on this for tonight.
Do we, are we approving this tonight, mayor, this point?
Well, since the motion to postpone failed, then yes.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we strip out item number eight, which is the transit piece out of the strategy.
Oh, you make a motion to amend the document.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to amend the document to take out, and I believe it's strategy number eight?
That's what he said, yes, mayor. And before we move to a vote on that, Carrie, can you maybe speak to, is that all transit programs period? I mean, if we wanted to try to do another parking ride in the future or even, you know, we had a speaker come to us just a few weeks ago talking about a specific type of transit. I mean, this is just, it says prototypical bus transit in general. I'm just curious if you're speaking about a specific type of mass transit in this strategy eight.
Not not a specific type now, it just says begin to plan where potential pedestrian improvements could, you know, could enhance the, you know, the areas, but it doesn't, it's not anything specific.
Okay, and so that would have to come back to council anyway for us to agree whether or not we wanted to move forward with any type of strategy related to that. Is that correct?
I asked that, yes. I asked specifically about that earlier and yes, that will have to come back to council for any specifics on that. But we have a motion in a second to amend the document taking out and and help me with the, is it strategy number eight?
Yes, sir.
So with that, Adam Secretary would call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Little? Member Owens?
No.
Member Orlando?
No.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion fails four to two.
Okay, so we're back with the original document to vote on. I'm going to call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Same.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
No.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Cash for clarification from legal, can we just abstain when we want to? How's this work, second time?
Just to be clear, the way our charter is set up, an abstention is it acts as a no vote officially. It's not, it doesn't go down and as you voted, no, it goes in the to the minutes as an abstention, but the effect of it is a no vote.
I've always believed that you let your yeses be yeses and your no's be no's. You should be real specific with it.
I just wanted, I mean, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you. Aye.
Motion carries three to two.
Okay, moving on to new business item number two. Mr. Carbone, go ahead and put that on there since you're a member of the audit committee as well.
Thank you, mayor. Conservation Possible Action Resolution R twenty twenty-one dash sixty-one, so moved. Okay.
We have a motion in a second and the staff report, I believe we have a presentation from our auditor.
Yes, sir. So this is for accepting the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year twenty. Independent audit was done by BKD and we have a presentation from Amanda Eves with BKG, BKD.
Welcome to our man, our meeting, Amanda.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you all today. I believe that I'm going to share my presentation here in a minute. But I appreciate, we appreciate the opportunity to work with the city of Pearland this year. My name's Amanda Eves. I am an audit partner with BKD here in our Houston office. And I also have, we also have Shakita Rawls on the call as well. She is a senior manager here in our Houston office as well. Am I, should I be on camera? Do I need to turn something on or am I just audio?
Amanda, you are just on audio right now.
Okay, okay, all right. So this is our first year to work with the city of Pearland. And again, we really appreciate the opportunity to work with you all and to provide our audit services to you. And also today to be able to present highlights from your comprehensive annual financial report for two thousand twenty with you. Your staff does a tremendous job in pulling together all of the information that's required in order to prepare a comprehensive annual financial report. And we'll talk a little bit more about the components as we go through the presentation. But there really is a lot of information here and again, that your staff does a great job pulling all of this information together. So first of all, just kind of a high level overview of what's included in your comprehensive annual financial report. So the the document is a little shy of two hundred pages altogether. Starts out with introductory section that really includes general information about the city, the city's structure, organizational charts and also a transmittal letter from city management that really is the first document within the report. And so that document is important for you to read as you begin your your review of the financial statements. And then next is the financial section. And as you can see, this is really the the biggest piece of the document. This includes your basic financial statements and supplementary information. So this is where you will find your balance sheets and income statements for the various funds of the city as well as for the government wide as a whole. So your financial statements include fund level information as well as information where all of all of the the individual fund information is pulled into a couple of categories and really presented on a presenting the the financial net position and statement of activities for the city as a whole. And so we'll look at a snapshot of that as well. And then lastly is the statistical section. So this is the last part of your financial report and this has a lot of really useful information, trend data. It includes financial and non-financial data for the past ten years. And so this is useful information as well for you to review and reviewing the financial statements. So this is this this introductory section transmittal letter, this is the first document in your report. And I just wanted to point out, if you look toward the end of that document on, I believe it's on page Roman numeral thirteen, there's a section that talks about awards and acknowledgements. And I just wanted to point this out because it really is significant. And so the city of Pearland has received the GFOA Government Finance Officers Association triple crown recipient, which means that they have really went above and beyond in financial reporting and and three different areas and received awards in those areas for a number of years. So the first one is their certificate of achievement for financial reporting. And you have received that for the past forty-four years. The Sting which budget presentation award and you've been receiving that for thirty-three, thirty-three years. And then the popular annual financial reporting award is a new award that the that the city received. And so you have received all of the awards under that triple crown now. And so just wanted to say, make sure, point that out and say congratulations to you and your team in in preparing all of all of those reports and doing such a great job with it. And it really also shows the transparency efforts that the city really, you know, has has achieved over the years in providing this level of information to the users. And then lastly, the government government treasures organization of Texas, sorry, certificate of distinction for the city's investment policy. So those awards are mentioned in your comprehensive annual financial report. And then next we'll go to the financial section. So this is a slide that's in the management's discussion and analysis in your financial report. It's on page ten. And this is really just a snapshot of your balance sheet. And this is what I mentioned earlier, your government wide financial statements. These are the statements that pull together all of the activity of the city into governmental type activities and business type activities. So your business type activities are going to be your water and sewer and your solid waste activities. And then everything else is reported under governmental. And so you'll see at the end of the year, September thirtieth, twenty twenty, you had a total net position for the city as a whole of about eight hundred and thirty-two million. And if you look in the second to the far right column, that net investment and capital asset number, so four numbers from from the bottom there, you had about eighty-five percent of your net position or equity, if you will, at the end of the year was invested in capital assets. And that amount represents the capital assets of the city net of any related debt that you have issued for the capital assets. And then the next page we have is a snapshot. And then the next page we have is a snapshot of your government-wide statement of activities. So again, the city as a whole, government and business type activities. So you'll see that you increased your net position for the city as a whole by about 32 million in 2020. You will see also, if you look down the third line down from bottom, a restatement line. So this is a, and we'll, we'll talk about this a little bit more in a few minutes. But this line shows a restatement for some errors that were found in your prior year that balance sheet amounts that were corrected in the current year. And we'll talk about those in a little bit more detail in a few minutes. So next I wanted to just go through some of your more significant notes of your financial statements. So the notes to your financials follow your balance sheet and income statements for your major or significant funds of the city. And so the first note in your notes to the financials is the note that describes all of your significant accounting policies. So this is really, a really important note for you to read in order to understand how different transactions and balances are accounted for. And you know, what, what transactions are being reported in your financial statements and to really just understand the policies behind that. It's a pretty lengthy note, but it's a really good one and it starts on page 37. And then next, I wanted to point this one out as well. So this is note three, receivables. This is specifically, I, I'm pointing this one out because it's a change from the prior year, just in the presentation. So you'll see that the city in their proprietary funds this year has broken out receivables between billed and unbilled. So in your enterprise fund and your water and sewer and your solid waste, you have, you have accounts receivable at the end of the year that are billed receivables for invoices that have been sent out before year end for services provided before year end. And then you also have services that were provided before year end, but they weren't billed out until after year end. And so the city looked at those receivables and brought them out in this note this year so that you could see what was billed and what was unbilled at the end of the year. And then you'll see a note at the bottom, a narrative describing exactly what's reported in that unbilled amount. But it's just, again, another step to, to provide more transparency to the users of the financial statements. And then this note I wanted to point out, your employee retirement system or T M R S. So this note is really significant because there are a lot of actuarial assumptions that come into play and that really drive what's reported as your net pension liability at the end of the year. And so that, the note itself is a pretty lengthy one, but I would recommend that you, that you read that. And this is just a snapshot of the changes in your net pension liability for 2020. So you'll see in that far right column, that's your net pension liability. At the beginning of the year, it was 30.3 million and it was reduced by 9.3 million during the year to 21 million. And if you look at the activity on the lines in between, the biggest component of that that reduced that pension liability this year was net investment income. All right, and then this, this note is really similar. Ten to two, other post-employment benefit plans, a supplemental debt benefit fund, and then also retiree healthcare plan. Both of these plans also have significant actuarial valuation and assumptions that go into this. And so I would recommend that you look over those as well. But this just gives you a snapshot of your, your total O P A liability, including both of those plans. So at the end of the year, that liability was 7.6 million. And you will see, if you go look at the details behind those, you will see that your net pension liability for the retiree healthcare plan did increase during the year. And that was a result of a change in the discount rate. But I would recommend that you, that you read through those notes just to see the assumptions that come into play in making that estimate. And then note 15, so this is, we talked earlier about the errors, the corrections of the errors that were made. So this is a detail of those adjustments that were made to correct beginning balances during the year. So you'll see that these affected the government type activities, your water and sewer fund, your solid waste fund, and also internal service funds. The biggest, as you look through these line items, the biggest components here of these adjustments were related to capital assets, properly recording those capital assets, capitalizing them when they were required to be capitalized or when they went into use, properly recording the depreciation on them. And then also the last line there you will see is the internal service fund allocation. So internal service fund, the city has internal service funds for healthcare and motor pool primarily. Those are the, the larger components. And, and those activities are required when you get to the government-wide level to be allocated between government type and business type. And in the past, they were all reported as government type activities. So there was an adjustment made to allocate the activity at the end of the year between government type, government type and business type. And that's really a, a financial reporting requirement that will come up, you know, at the end of the year when you're preparing your comprehensive annual financial report. So that was an adjustment that was made this year as well. So that is really, really the highlights of the components of your comprehensive annual financial report. And then lastly, I just wanted to talk about our audit. So we are conducting an audit of your September 30th, 2020 financial statements. We're in the review and wrap-up, final wrap-up mode now, planning to issue our final report before the end of the month. And that also includes not only the financial statement audit, but also compliance audits. So because the city receives federal and state funding over 750,000, you're required to have what's called a single audit. And in your case, you have a federal single audit and a state single audit requirement because you receive over 750 in funds of both of those sources. The federal single audit guidance, so typically we will do our single audit work, really we'll start it in the summer usually and, you know, conduct it along with our, with our audit work. The guidance on due to COVID-19 and specifically the, the coronavirus relief fund and, and other CARES Act funding, the guidance from the federal government as far as the compliance requirements wasn't issued until December 22nd, 2020. So it really did push back, you know, push back the single audits and also, you know, just having the information even for the, the grantees and knowing exactly what was, you know, what, what the compliance requirements were and what was going to be tested. So, so that, you know, the, the work in that area definitely didn't happen as timely as, as it would in a normal year. We do have two major programs that we're testing. One of them is the coronavirus relief fund. The other is the state highway planning cluster. And then the state single audit includes tech stop program, which is the McCard Road Project. And again, we are working to wrap those up and expect to issue our reports by the end of the month. And so that is really a high level summary of, of what I had today. I'd be happy to answer any questions at all anyone has.
So before we get to questions, Trent, does that conclude staff's presentation or staff report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move now to questions, comments, concerns from council. Seeing none, we will move to Madam Chair, to, or excuse me, Madam Secretary to offer the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021-61.
All right, moving forward, new business item number three. Member Little, would you put that on the table, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council input and discussion FY 21 and FY 22 allocations. U S Department of Housing Urban Development Community Development Block Grant and C D B G Coronavirus Standby Funds.
All right, so this, this is just council input and discussion, so it doesn't require a motion nor a second, so.
That's correct. So council input and discussion. The city annually receives community development block grant funding. And we have FY 21 and FY 22 allocations as part of this discussion tonight. In addition to our normal allocations, there have been two allocation packages through the CARES Act. So we're required to adopt an action plan to use those funds. And this is the beginning of that discussion as to how to allocate those funds as we move forward. Joel is going to walk us, Joel Hardy is going to walk us through the what, the where, and the when the funds can be spent on and the schedule for adopting the action plan. Joel, all yours.
I think I can speak loud. All right, there we go. We do this on a regular basis as part of our set of planning activities regarding the community development block grant funds we receive on an annual basis, as Trent mentioned. We do have a little bit of a different level of complexity because HUD last year was granted CARES Act funds to further distribute to entitlement jurisdictions like the city of Pearland. And so we were able to receive two of those. And so we're going to be incorporating those two programs into our discussion as far as how we will propose to and plan for the use of those funds. But for the public that may not be aware and for council members that may not be familiar, the community development block grant program is a program that's delivered by HUD. Cities that are 50,000 above in population and counties that are 200,000 above in population and all 50 states are considered entitlements or participating jurisdictions in the program and therefore are entitled to receive and use these funds. They're mainly to assist in housing, public and social services activities, infrastructure, facility improvements and other redevelopment activities. And, you know, despite what some believe, the, the C D B G program is a very flexible program, which leaves it up to the entitlement as to how those funds are spent. In your package under attachment B, I included a, a, a significant table that includes what's called the national objectives that HUD would allow us to meet when using these funds. And the next slide actually breaks down the allocations that we've been notified that we are scheduled to receive. We received the FY 2021 regular C D B G allocation as part of our entitlement jurisdiction status that we receive every year based on a formula, as well as the C V one and C V two allocations of 251,000 and 443,000. However, because of the coronavirus pandemic, a lot of the work that went along with entitlement jurisdictions and states having, you know, a really urgent need to plan for the use of the direct CARES Act funds that we had and dealing with a lot of other challenges, HUD offered cities like ours the opportunity to take a waiver from planning. And we took advantage of that. Mayor at the time, Mayor Reed, signed off on the waiver for the planning for the C V allocations as well as the 2021. And Mayor Kevin Cole followed suit with some other waivers that we requested. And, but now it's time for us to begin to use these funds. I think we're in a good place because we've expended our CARES Act distribution, some other funds that came from the CARES Act that have allowed us to meet some HUD and, and challenged community needs in the community. And this fund, these funds can be used to establish different rounds of support for, for our work. And in February, we also received our FY 2022 allocation notice, which is the 455,947 dollar amount. So in total, we've got to plan for a little over 1.5 million dollars in HUD funds over the next few months. So just to give you a little bit of background on what the program purpose of these funds is, of course, the congressional intent behind the HUD Act was anti-poverty, poverty work that was designed to meet HUD national objectives. I've got the regulatory citation up there. You hear us talk about the COTL Federal Regulations, the CFR for HUD, that's Title 24. And the 24 CFR 570.208 is where the regulations are that pretty much tell us how we can and should spend these funds. We can use the funds to remove slum and blight from our community to meet an urgent need such as a catastrophe or hurricane, other disaster like coronavirus pandemic-related challenges, as well as serve those with low to moderate income. And there are two ways we do that with this program. We can serve individuals and households that are 80% or below the metropolitan statistical area income. And we can also put projects in areas that serve 41.77 or more low to moderate income households. So a census block group or a service area for an infrastructure, water line system or something along those lines, the recipients or the beneficiaries of those investments would have to be comprised of 41.77 or more low to moderate income households. And there's a reason for that, and I'll go into more discussion about that as we progress. In the past, we had a lower threshold, which was 40.93. That's been stepped up a little bit. And I would say that another urgent need that ties into the focus of our work over the next few months will be to address coronavirus COVID-19 related issues. So I talked a little bit about the metropolitan statistical area income. We're still dealing with the 2020 income limits where HUD is concerned that hasn't changed. So this table that's on this slide provides the different levels of low income that the program is designed to impact. And so our 80% income limits is at the bottom row and it's provided by household. So that should tell you based on the number of people in a household, what total household income level would have to be in place in order for a beneficiary in that household to receive support or assistance from this program. So this slide kind of talks about area benefit a little bit. As you know, Pearland has, like every other city, census block groups, census tracts. The map on the screen depicts the census block groups in Pearland that are comprised of 41.77 or more low to moderate income households. And the reason being that for that 41.77 percentage is Pearland does not have a census tract that is 51% or more low to moderate income. So HUD what's, has what's called an exception criteria status for cities like Pearland that have low poverty rates and may not reach that upper quartile of calculation, low to moderate income. And they give us a break, if you will. So we have a lower percentage that we have to meet for area benefit projects. And that fluctuates, you know, based on the, the way the formula is calculated for allocating our funds. And it changes, it can change annually. Ours has remained the same for the last couple of years or so. Right now in Texas, there are, I believe, two counties and six cities that are considered entitlement jurisdiction or entitlement exception criteria grantees that don't have a 51% or more low to moderate income requirement for area benefit projects. And again, this information hasn't changed in the last few years. That's why you see the program year in 2019, fiscal year 2020 information up there. So I think I've kind of discussed this, but for Pearland, just for background sake, we've got 45 total block groups throughout the city, 12 are eligible. But we've really got four strong areas that don't involve block groups that go outside our jurisdiction's boundaries or cover a mud or some other area that might not be so wise for us to try to put an area benefit product, project in. And those are mostly comprised of an area that is north of 518, east of Cullen, west of 35, and on up to the northern boundary of the city limits, with the exception of 66500-2, I believe, that go a little bit into Brookside Village, as well as, I want to say that's block group number four of the 66500 series that's got Mud 16 in it and a little bit of Brookside Village. But we've worked with HUD and the General Land Office, in fact, on some of our eligibility for work and have gotten clearance that anything we put in those areas that's serving the majority of the residents in those areas is good to go as far as area benefit projects. And this is especially the case when it comes to flood proofing and doing drainage projects and hurricane disaster recovery mitigation. And if you can reflect on our mitig- And if you can reflect on our mitigation application to the GLO, that $96 million we're requesting is for work that's to take place in this particular area. And lastly, we've got one block group that's an actual Harris County block group, but that's not one that's eligible for consideration as far as our work is concerned. The next slide gives us a little bit of background on the spending categories for CDBG as well as the coronavirus work. They're pretty much the same with the exception of two considerations. One is all the CV money has to be spent on things that have a nexus to COVID-19. And I can explain further, give a little bit of an idea of what that might look like as in the form of a project. The other difference is with the program administration activities, the regular distribution of funds comes with a 20% cap when it comes to what we can use for program administration. Your coronavirus relief funds have a 10% cap. So we have a little bit of a limitation as far as what we can use for our own purposes when it comes to management and oversight of those programs. But a good example of a coronavirus HUD project that's funded with a CV allocation would be, for example, if we wanted to expand or improve the NAP Center for the purpose of making more space available so that seniors aren't challenged with social distancing, and we want to make sure that they have outside areas to socialize and, and participate in activities, that's an example. If we were building a sidewalk, for example, it might mean that we say we're going to make sure that's a wider sidewalk so that people using that sidewalk aren't likely to come in direct contact with one another. And again, the social distancing element is there and lots of other things that the CARES Act would, would allow us to fund. But still with a nexus to 24 CFR 570.208, we've still got to meet HUD national objectives, and we've still got to serve low to moderate income households or area benefit in that, in that regard. The next slide gives us some examples of things that are not just eligible, but these are things that the city of Pearland has ever actually done over the years. So we've done some form of this work that's on the tables on the screen, is highlighted in yellow. You know, we've, early on, did a lot of sidewalk work with our CDBG allocation. We currently do some code enforcement work, housing rehab. We're always in a fair housing activity mode because HUD does expect us to make sure that we're available to respond to fair housing complaints and concerns and are doing our best to affirmatively further fair housing with these funds. And we've also funded senior services and mental health services with the, with the funds we've gotten from HUD. Just some further discussion about the available funds we have and some of the ideas that we could consider. This is not to put anything out there that says we should do this. These are just examples. We've got 884,000 in regular CDBG funds that we've got a plan for. So one eligible activity could be a small brain drainage project in that portion of the target area that we discussed. One thing about that area is it is flood prone, and there are existing master drainage plan projects there. Those are things that could be considered. We want to probably encourage that we consider keeping our housing rehab and code enforcement work moving on. There's some good continuity there, serving the population of people who probably can't afford to make repairs to their homes. And another good area that we've done work in that might serve these funds well is waterline replacement. We've taken old AC transite waterline out of the ground and replaced it with PVC throughout the target area, and we could consider continuing to do some of that work. Some of the things we've done with the coronavirus funds that we've received from the CARES Act that HUD's funds could complement would be a continuation of rental assistance programs. Right now, we're actually administering round two of our rental assistance programs, and those funds actually do come from HUD. Council acted on accepting those dollars in January, I believe, and we got 120,000, I think, to provide support for local renters. That program deadline for applications ended on the 12th of March, and we're now in the process of reviewing those applications for funding, but we could issue some of these funds towards a round three of rental assistance. Another thing we did during the summer is reallocated some of the funds we had from a previous allocation to food delivery. Actions of Brazoria did a wonderful job, you know, getting food out to those in need. They're still functioning right now, and our plan would be to consider giving them some additional funds that would go retroactively back to our October 1 to cover some of their eligible costs and continue that work. That's a very important, noteworthy example of things that, that we can continue to fund. And I mentioned, you know, something along the lines of the NAP Center, expanding that facility and using these dollars to make sure that the elderly that are members at our NAP Center aren't, you know, so close to each other that they can't prevent Corona, the spread of coronavirus. And we've also supported some mental health work in the form of our allocations to the Council and Connections for Change organization. So those are just examples of things we could do with these funds. To note, the coronavirus relief money that's coming from HUD has to be spent by September 30th of 2022, but our regular allocations can have a much longer life as long as we don't violate the timely spending requirements in that same Code of Federal Regulations in 24 CFR 570. So a little bit of information about what our timeline could look like, and I want to go back, you know, we, we brought some of this information to council last year, and I think our hefty responsibilities with dealing with CARES Act activities call for us to pull back, request those waivers from HUD. We just did not have the capacity to go through this kind of process at the time. But now that we've got our CARES Act allocations out of the way and are progressing towards additional rounds of assistance, I think we've got the capacity to oversee and manage this process as it should be. And we've got some next steps that we would incur. So we've got a first public hearing that we would come back and allow the public's involvement in the planning process in mid-April. And considering some of that input and some of our own planning priorities, council's input and discussion tonight, we would probably be able to put together a draft action plan that would go out for public consideration for a public comment period. Another thing HUD has done is said you don't need to have this long 30-day public comment period. We're still expecting the, these funds to be used in the, in the form of an emergency allocation, so they've shortened that. And a five-year, a five-day public comment period is acceptable by HUD. We would incur that activity, make sure council gets an idea of what we're planning to bring back specifically in the form of that draft plan through our Thursday memo, and then come back to council with the necessary revisions and have you act on it in mid-July for us to send to HUD. The waivers require that we submit our action plans prior to August 16th of 2021. So that'll give us a lot of time to adjust for that timeline if need be. And that's pretty much it for my staff presentation and ready to receive council input and discussion as we move further. I can go back and forth through slides if you so wish, but I'll pass back the balance to you, Mayor.
All right, good, good presentation, Joel, as always. So we'll turn it over to council for input, discussion, questions, comments. Council member?
Appreciate the presentation, Joel. Very thorough, and I think I have a good understanding of, of how the different funds work. Just wanted to kind of lay out, I guess, what my priorities are here. I think we're very fortunate as a city in regard to what you described of not having any pockets in our city of very concentrated poverty and, and, you know, we're, we're very fortunate to be in that position. So with that being said, I, I do think we have a specific need in our community and just kind of generally as it pertains, not as much to working people, but to children and to seniors. And so I guess that would be kind of my area of focus. First, with kind of seniors, we, I, I think there's some good discussion on the NAP Center. I also think there's an opportunity with, you know, we have the, the NAP Center over here on the east end of town. I, I don't know necessarily what that would look like in terms of expanding the capacity of the NAP Center or in having a satellite kind of thing to be able to have broader coverage across the entire city. Certainly, there are needy and low-income seniors that are spread out throughout all of Pearland, and we have the misfortune of being a long and narrow city, which can make things tough, especially if you're an 80-year-old person in our community who doesn't want to drive across town to get a hot meal necessarily. So I, I think that's an area of focus for sure. And then also just in terms of children and youth services, I, I think we've had success here in delegating a lot of this, a lot of these resources to nonprofits that have, you know, are the experts in this, who have identified where the needs are in our community. And so in, in terms of building that nonprofit capacity for children and youth services in addition to partnering with organizations like Actions, that would be kind of my primary area focus for this set of funds.
Council member?
Joel, if I ask a question with the census coming up, is there any, is there anything we need to be aware of in terms of, are we going to get close to that 51% and have that exception change or anything on the horizon with future CDBG allocations?
Yes, council member, a couple of things that kind of come to mind. Number one, I think with the COVID pandemic and the census taking probably having some overlap, you'll probably see some income reporting that might be a little bit different than what we would normally expect. And I think when it comes to situational homelessness and poverty levels, you may see some of that show up in the census outcome. And one thing that planning was ardent about when it came to the boundaries and the planning that took place with HGAC and the census folks that were assigned to Texas was trying to keep the boundaries of the city and the census block groups and tracts specific to the city boundaries. Because we do have some challenges where we're overlapping into other jurisdictions, and it makes it difficult to plan in those areas. So I just want to say there was some great work done there by planning staff, and they took that work very seriously, and HGAC supported a lot of that work. So I think that'll hopefully result in a good outcome. You know, we were thinking about the income levels in certain areas where there are needs and being able to clearly identify the ones that would be eligible for funding in this area and with transportation and things like that. So those are just some thoughts that immediately come to mind in that regard, but we'll see what, what comes out. It'll probably take a few years for that analysis to actualize in the form of some usable census data, but we'll continue to do the work that we've got in front of us.
Okay, great, thank you. And I mean, the other thing that came to mind was with some of the elderly and low income with the recent freeze. I know of some that still are having trouble getting the plumbers and getting the water running, but I'm just looking at the timeframe, hopefully our nonprofits will step up before this even comes back to us and help close some of those gaps. There, there's anything we can do within this CDBG funding to, to help that?
Actually, we have, we have kind of stepped up the outreach on our housing rehab program to individuals that had debris points, for example, and that reported to us that they did have damage. And so code enforcement, fire, the housing rehab program, and actually with community development, we all kind of got together and targeted that group. And I think we've got some applications coming out of that that'll allow us to help some of those folks.
Great, thank you. Good deal, moving on. Council member Little?
Yeah, great presentation, Joel. I appreciate all the work that went into it. I kind of second what Councilman Orlando said. I think we should concentrate on the, the children and the elderly. They're the most vulnerable in the population and, you know, their ages, no fault of their own. So I look forward to your recommended allocations and, again, good job. That's all I have, Mayor.
Good. Rose, none online either, either direction from either one? And none here?
Joel, this is Adrian. On the, the ARP that's coming out, that's, that's related to the CDBG, but that's not an actual application, I mean, that we have to submit or anything. That's going through CDBG, but it's not like the traditional block grant type thing. Is that correct?
So the Treasury is using HUD's Formula entitlement allocation procedures to identify the amount of money that would be dispersed to a city like Pearland. So that's where you see that HUD entitlement jurisdiction work come into play with the American Rescue Plan. So our allocation is not based on a per capita allocation like it was with the CARES Act. It's a little bit more complex than that and probably gets us a few more bucks here and there, but you know, nothing like surrounding cities. There's some cities that are just as, as equally sized as Pearland, but that are getting three or four times as much because of some of those complexities. But it's a little bit of a different way of getting the money out. But also to piggyback on that, HUD will receive some of that money as well and will probably further distribute CDBG, CV dollars, just like they did with the CARES Act, and we'll be seeing some more funds come our way where this type of work is concerned. So I anticipate us having a nice hefty allocation of dollars and along those lines as well.
All right, that's a very good distinction. I appreciate your input on that. That's all I had, and this is great, thank you.
Member Kamkar?
Yes, I want to echo Member Orlando's comments. I think with this COVID, especially hitting families, working families, families with children, and you start seeing news reports about the educational gap, the COVID slide that may affect children possibly for the rest of their lives. I think if we can allocate towards programs that address that need, or after-school programs or things of that nature, I, I think that would, that would be the highest and best use in a lot of respects, especially with the folks who've been affected, so.
Yeah, Joel, I just had a question. When you go back to kind of some of the suggestions and specifically, I mean, I get the seniors, we have this, we have the NAP building and some other programs specifically. And as far as children services, I was actually glad to hear Councilmember Kamkar talk about, you know, this, this learning gap, especially with kids that were home for such a long time and out of the classroom. So do, I mean, do we have resources locally that you can turn to, especially in the nonprofit side of things? Or how, where, when do we see, you know, some of these funds going to groups like that?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I think we do. We have done some children and youth services work where after-school and tutoring many years ago, we could look back into that folder and pull out some of the good stuff we did there. I think childcare is a definite need with some of the families that are going back to work after the pandemic and those kinds of considerations. I think our nonprofit community either has or we can invest in their organizational development along those lines. And going back to one of these slides, I think it's something that we may want to consider. We've done some small-level nonprofit capacity building with the Council and Connections for Change organization. We could use that same model to help, you know, build on after-care program, you know, tutoring, things like that. I think those things are going to be important for us to consider, social services-wise. But there are also a litany of infrastructure, facility improvement opportunities we can consider and just have a good blend of considerations and make sure we're investing in several different areas. So those all being good, good suggestions.
We look forward to seeing this coming back in a, in a public hearing format. Anything else from council? All right, seeing that, Joel, appreciated as always, always well informed and well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Moving on to item, new business item number four, Member Kamkar, would you place that on the agenda, or excuse me, on the table, please?
Sure. Consideration and possible action, second and final reading ordinance number 220-12. So moved.
We have a motion and a second into staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This was originally presented on February 22nd with the quarterly UB update, these changes to the utility ordinance. And we had our first reading on March 1st, which passed unanimously. And so tonight is our second and final reading, and Ms. Nancy Massey is going to cover a couple of questions raised at the last meeting as well as by the ad hoc committee before we move forward. Go ahead, Ms. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Upperson. Good, good afternoon, or excuse me, good evening, Mayor, council and, and contentants in here. A couple of questions that came up from the March 1st meeting was from Councilman Owens, and I'd like to thank him personally for this opportunity to give you an, give you an update on what we found on this. Your question was the delivery method on ordinance number section 30-24 on the termination procedures, and the delivery method was changed from certified mail to mail. And this ordinance is where we terminate customers' water services against mail to mail. And this ordinance is where we terminate customers' water services against customers' consent or in a non-emergency situation. And when the city provides that first ordinance, and the city, this ordinance, we're going to present to you, with this ordinance, we want to go ahead and indicate that along with cost and labor savings, we can put that ordinance on the back of the delinquent notice itself. So no longer do we have to worry about sending out a different letter to the customers to let them know that. You were asking if the provisions will be seen. They will be seen. The whole ordinance can be placed on the back of the delinquent notice, which is currently blank. So thank you for that opportunity. I also want to let you know, too, that before these customers are terminated for service, that they are contacted eight times by staff. They get, they get two regular bills, because we don't shut off for two, we just shut off for two months for interrears. So customers get two regular bills, they get two robocalls to let them know that they have been, get late fees assessed to their account, they get two delinquent notices, then they get two robocalls again, one week prior to the shut off, and then they get their water shut off. That's eight times before we actually terminate their service. So there's a lot of contact that we do make with these customers. Another question that came up was the question from the ad hoc committee regarding the meter testing with section number 30-46. We took out the question of whether or not customers can be viewing the testing itself. And yes, the committee, I want to let them know that the meter testing can be seen, and it has been set up in the past to do this. Customers can witness the testing. The tester does request no pictures and no videos to be taken because it is a proprietary process, but it can be set up. Further, the committee asked some other questions regarding the ordinance verbiage. They said the testing equipment is maintained in accordance to the AWWA standards. It's not regulated by the state for weights and measures. They do use a, the tester does use a MAG meter to be, that is certified by the Siemens, as well as an OHA scale that is certified by a number of different local companies that they can use. They test their meters, they calibrate those annually. And the contractor is a meter maintenance company. And within the process itself, the meter is tested to determine if the repairs are needed. The city utilizes this testing process to independently test the water meters themselves. The contractor does use a mobile unit, but within that mobile unit itself, that testing company uses two completely different technologies. As I said before, one was a MAG meter, the other one was an OHA scale. And to that end, it is extremely unlikely that both units would drift the same amount out of calibration and in the same direction. So I wanted to indicate those two questions and answer those for council as well as for the ad hoc committee, which we'll bring forward to them as well. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Hey, Ms. Massey, would you clarify on the meter testing? What exactly are we changing in the ordinance real quick?
What was being changed on it, Mayor, was we were taking out the piece of where a customer can witness it. And those can be witnessed anyway. We'd be happy to set those up. We have set those up in the past. The customer didn't show up for it, but we did set it up with the testing company.
How can we guard, I mean, obviously, we have an existing testing company that said that that's okay, but we may change testing companies in the future. How do we guard against, you know, that some testing company saying, nope, we're just, we're just not going to let you view it? How do we, how do we guard against that?
It's a great question, Mayor. We're going to put this into the RFP itself for the testing companies, that they need to have the ability for our customers to be, to witness the testing. Again, they can't take pictures or video of it, and they'll have the capability of doing that. And we'll have that in the RFP.
Are we doing anything with the existing to, I guess, memorialize that versus since we're taking this out of our existing ordinance, which requires it, what are we doing with our existing companies to make sure that we're memorializing the ability to do that? I know they've told us that.
Right.
Telling us that and putting it into some type of an agreement are two different things.
We can get that into some type of document if we needed to, Mayor, to indicate that you have signified that you're going to have our people go out there and we can have them witness this if it's set up in such a way.
I think we, I think we need to. Also, I believe, you didn't address it, but I believe there was a question about fees.
Yes, sir.
The testing fees. We're taking the fee out of this ordinance, but where are we putting that? So we, it's not just nebulous.
The fees, the charges, and all the ordinances are going to be placed into the budget schedule itself that is set by resolution, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Coker?
Actually, we have two fee ordinances in the city. We tried to centralize all of our fees. And so those fees are located in either the non-development fee ordinance or our development fee ordinance. And so those fees are actually already in that ordinance. And so what this is doing is just cleaning it up to take them out of this ordinance, because it's been so long since that part of the ordinance had been amended. But they're already located in a separate ordinance.
Okay. And then these changes that were recommended in this, in this update to this ordinance, were they looked at by Raftellus, were they recommended, agreed, talked about, or whatever with Raftellus, since that's an outside group, outside management consultant that took a look at this?
Yes, sir. The ordinances were sent to Raftellus back in November, and they didn't make any other recommendations on them.
Any other questions, comments from council? Councilor Rowland?
I got one I really don't understand. Section 3022, maintenance of the system by the consumer. And it says, "Consumer of any utility service furnished by the city shall maintain and keep in good repair all connections, appliances, and apparatus installed in connection with such utility service." What does that mean?
The, if reading through that, they would, they would have to maintain round their meter box and keep it clean for us so we can get, you know, get to it. We have to have access to it, sir.
Okay, because I noticed that when I get out and walk every morning, at some of the places, the people mowing the yard has hit the top of the box.
Yes, sir.
And then I'll go around and straighten them back up and put them back in because they're outside. And so I don't know if that refers to that, you know?
No, sir. That refers to the fact that they should keep it clean around there. But they also, it also notes, too, that if they make any damage to it, that they're going to be assessed that, the fees or the cost that it is to repair that.
Okay, so I didn't know if it could read it, if the top of it's upside down beside it.
It depends. If the intent of self was ever damaged, then they would have to, then it wouldn't be read. And then staff will have to go out to that location and actually read it.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, let's call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero to adopt the second reading of ordinance number 2020-12.
All right, moving forward, new business item number five. Mr. Owens, would you put that on the table, please?
Number five, consideration, possible action, resolution number R2021-62. I saw move.
We have a motion and a second into staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This contract, as discussed in the Raftellus report, there's a need to improve communication surrounding utility billing and water service in general, especially with the 30230 and the upcoming switch to AMI. So Rogue Water is the recommended firm here, and they specialize in branding and communications regarding utilities. And they'll complement and supplement our existing communication staff in those areas. This will help also provide an outside perspective to help round out that branding and communication surrounding our utilities. Rogue Water has experience with many utilities across the country, and especially several across the state of Texas. And through the RFP process was the highest rated firm when everybody got through their evaluations. So we're recommending a contract with Rogue Water in the amount of $52,800.
Does that complete the staff report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, turn it over to council for questions, comments. Member Little?
Yeah, was this contract submitted to the ad hoc committee for their discussion prior to getting to council?
So the ad hoc committee wasn't, didn't get to contribute to the contract itself because we had very specific specifications for the technical requirements that we need for the ad sizes, the type of deliverables we want. But they will be included now that we've chosen a partner in the research process.
I wasn't referring to drafting the specifics of the contract, but I was just wondering if the concept itself was run by the ad hoc committee prior to presenting it to council?
I'm sorry, could you?
So the recommendation came out of the Raftellus report, and so did the ad hoc committee. Was that one of the recommendations out of the Raftellus report they confirmed?
Just curious if there was any discussion by the ad hoc committee about this prior to tonight?
I just from.
Head shaking, no out there.
Yeah, from my experience with the ad hoc committee, not specifically. And I do know that they have kind of dispensed with all of the recommendations out of the Raftellus report, with the exception of 30230 and maybe one other. But I don't recall the actual discussion around that recommendation from Raftellus.
That's all, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember?
Yeah, I just want to address some kind of previous comments and commentary out in the community. You know, I mean, this has been a really long and thorough process. You know, we've been dealing with this for over a year at this point. And, you know, people were upset and wanted to see an investigation. And so we had an investigation. People were upset and wanted to see an outside audit. We had an outside audit. People were upset and wanted a citizen committee. We have a citizen committee. People were upset, and they say, you know, the city needs to communicate better. We want better communications. We're trying to do that. But, and now people seem to be upset that there's a cost associated with doing those things, or that there's a time associated with doing those things. You can't win. And so this, I just want to say, I don't think this is to improve anyone's reputation. This is needed because you go out on Facebook and there's a fire hose of misinformation and conspiracy theories and division. And it's just a swamp. And we need to get accurate info out to folks as all these changes are being put in place. We need to explain clearly to people what is going on. And honestly, we need to do that so that we can bring this situation to a close and move past this for the city and resolve it in a way that's amicable to as many people as possible. But you're not going to please everybody. And we have to move forward. And I think we have to tell people what the plan is, how we're getting there, and move forward. So I, this was not my proposal. I think it's needed and a good one. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember? Did you? Any other comments? Mr. Kamkar?
Yes, I want to kind of develop that argument very briefly. I was talking to several different neighbors of mine, and they're asking, what is this about with this water thing? And I've had people contacting me probably every other week since I've been on this council. And there is a boatload of misinformation, conspiracy theories. I have a newsflash, but finance and accounting is hard, and we had an accounting error. And we are essentially now having to spend dollars to rebuild trust and to kind of explain what is the process. I've had multiple people, even other elected officials, tell me that they called in the hotline, and they talked to Ms. Massey and her team, and they got their item resolved in like 20 minutes. And they got it resolved to their satisfaction. And so I hate that we're spending dollars on marketing, but the reality situation is, there's so much of an information sewer that we're having to clean up. And I think this is very necessary. What I would like to communicate to the team is, we're going to spend a lot of dollars. It needs to be very clear what happens, what you do about it if you think you have an error, and who do you call? Or how do we address this? I think those should be the three goals. We could have 10 different things to want to communicate. But what I have learned is, the city has the talent and the staff now to manage this process, and we have to connect those residents who have an issue or think they have an issue with that. And if we do that effectively, I think we will take out the conspiracy theories and the mistrust, and we will replace it with actual performance. Our city team, when they work hard on COVID vaccines, when they work hard on the Arctic blast, they do a great job. And I think utility billing is going to be a great job going forward. And we have to communicate that effectively.
I'll just echo this. With this specific item, I think it's warranted specifically because of the AMI rollout and educating people on the benefits of AMI, how it's going to work, how it's going to, how they can get it to work for them. I mean, at the end of the day, I'm starting to ask people, when you have your electricity set up, where you get notifications on your phone if you've used X amount of, you know, kilowatts or that type of thing? Are you getting notices? And for those who say yes, I say, well, that's where AMI is going. So you'll have that same type of parameters where you can, you can set the parameters. You can set it. You want it to be notified if you've used X amount of gallons in a particular day, you can be notified so you know what's happening with your system. And just educating people on that, I think it's specific to a company like this. I mean, this is what they do, so they can help us do this. Let's face it, this particular area of our city in the last three or four years hasn't been a shining star. And so because of that, I think this rollout needs to, needs to be good, needs to be done right, needs to be educating people across our city. So I think this is one item that I think it's warranted to make sure that we get the rollout of AMI done right. Yes, we've got to rebuild trust, and a lot of that is because we've, and setting an ad hoc committee aside and listening to them and implementing things is good. So anyway, I like this plan. I'm not sure what, I guess it's coming out of water sewer funds. Okay, because that was one question I had. So it's not coming out of general, a general fund or your property taxes coming out of your water sewer funds. So, okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, let's call for the vote.
Member Owens? Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R2021-62.
Okay, moving forward to item number six, I guess we'll come back. Mayor Pro Tim Hernandez, would you put six on the table, please?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R2021-47. So moved.
Agreed.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the annual maintenance contract with Tyler Technologies for our New World Enterprise Resource Planning suite of software. This supports critical functions, the software such as accounting, payroll, budget, purchasing, human resources management, as well as utility billing. It also ties into our permitting system, GIS, municipal courts, document management, and future systems like asset management and the AMI system we just referenced. This contract provides the regular updates and the annual updates of the software. So on the finance side and accounting side, it accounts for annual changes to W2s, 1099s, and withholdings that have to be updated as the federal laws around those change. It also provides technical support as needed. It's split between the general fund and the enterprise fund, 60% general fund, 40% enterprise fund. We had delayed this action from a previous meeting to provide some additional information on any issues and the funds that were then allocated for training with one of the past issues we had. So we provided you a memo on March 10th that had all the details on the couple of past issues we've had. It distinguished between issues with the software and issues that we had internally that have been addressed and how those were addressed, as well as the amount of funds that were allocated for training. There was about $18,500, which has been provided to train our folks in New World, new employees, which is required for them initially, as well as ongoing employees, so that they have a in-depth understanding of the system and can use the system efficiently. And that's been ongoing. We still have some of those dollars for future training as we move forward. So with that, that concludes staff report, and we recommend approval.
Okay, moving to questions, comments from council?
I'm guessing, reading through this, the best reason to vote for it is so we don't have to change. I mean, it seems like it's.
I mean, it seems like it's, it's lackluster at best and we're trying to work through it, but we're stuck. And that, that's a sucky place to be. Are we not, are we getting any, any support or? And does Tyler Technologies realize the, I guess, the gravity of kind of what, not that all these issues were them, but they've continued to help us pile on more and more issues with specifically on the billing and some of the basic errors that we can't process credit cards without, without errors? I don't know, it's just, it's frustrating. So are we just going to sit here and take it on the chin until we've had enough, what, five years from now, ten years from now?
So it is frustrating. It's one piece of the overall package that we're dealing with and they have put resources towards the, the issues. And one of the major ones is basically in a, in a test mode at this point and appears to have addressed some of the, the system speed issues we've had in the past. So I believe we have gotten their attention, especially delaying the, the vote on approving this, has gotten their attention, as well as the other issues where they did provide the training to us. So that's one piece of a much larger piece of software. And so, you know, it's, as you say, it is a significant, or as we talk about in the memo, it's a significant effort to, to change that. But we believe where they've addressed these issues, that's going to shore up those, those things we've had issues with in the past.
Is there anybody from Tyler Technologies on the line? Do we know?
Dan, do you know if we have anyone on?
No, no, we do not.
Or typically for renewals, we don't require them as part of the normal protocol, so.
Just wondering, especially since, maybe they're watching in on the regular channel, just especially since we delayed the vote. But I will say this, I asked Raftellus on two separate occasions about our software because of the, just the software issues and billing. And asked, like I said, I asked them on two different, two different phone calls. And I'll, I'll, I'll tell you exactly what Seth told me. He goes, there's not a software out there worth a damn. That's a direct quote. That every single one of them, you're going to have to do a workaround, especially when you buy one off the shelf, which that's what this is. It's going to have issues just interfacing. And workarounds are going to be best. And, and so that was in my first meeting with them, asked them again here just about a month or so ago, the same question and, and asked specifically, should we be looking to move away from them? And he reiterated, he said, I hate to tell you this, but sometimes it's better to know the devil that you have than going out there and getting knew. So I, and I'm like you, it's very frustrating. Seems to me it's been frustrating over the last year plus. And especially the reason why I asked if they were here, it'd be nice a year ago to have put them at the podium, podium and let them take the heat for their product rather than staff continuing to take their heat. And yet they're wherever and they're not getting it. So, so I mean, it's obviously, we've got to vote on this, but I hope they understand that their, their product has left pretty bad taste in this council's mouth. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, is this one part of New World?
Yes, they own New World.
Yes, sir.
I know, I heard you come back in a while ago and heard you talk about training. And when we approved the contract for New World and the discussion was had that New World said that part of it was that they were going to come in and do training of the staff. And I thought, well, you know, we're accepting this stuff on the water side and we don't know how to use New World, but we, I think it was a hundred and something, a hundred and something thousand dollars. But that was part of it, that they, within that contract that we had in New World, that they would come in and train staff. And that's what previously I've asked if they've been coming in and training staff. We'll find back on the date that we approved New World and on there, that was part of it, that they mentioned that they would come in and do training of the staff as a part of that contract if we renewed it.
So the, this is the renewal itself? We postponed that the last go around? And one of those questions was the training from one of the, the issues they had in the past and they allocated the eighteen thousand five hundred dollars for that. We've availed ourselves to that. We still have some of that available to continue that training.
It's been several months ago. It's a hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars for the price there. But anyway, when I heard you say about the training, I thought, okay, well, you know, bringing it back up, New World was supposed to, if we approved it, they were supposed to come in and do the training of the staff.
So we didn't approve it at that time? We, we're approving, or it's on for tonight to approve? And we, and we provided you information on that they have provided that training?
Yeah, because that was in conjunction with the question that came up that New World kind of screwed up and it was about eight, eight thousand dollars. And I asked then if the impact was that New World was going to pay for that eight thousand? Said no, and then at that time, the director of finance said, well, that's not the first time. So that's why all that discussion was going on when it was, you know, for New World during that period of time. Y'all elected not to go back out and say the eight thousand dollars that was lost because of the, what was the email that come out, said it made, they decided not to do it and this came out. And said they decided not to go back out again and make this statement because of what all we were going through with the water. So, but anyway, that was the training part of it.
Member Kamkar?
Mr. Epperson, the page six of the memorandum is written up with conclusion. Can you read that and kind of expound on that? I kind of want to understand kind of where we are. I think there's just a general discontent and, and I think, I don't have a good answer for it, but I kind of want to understand the conclusion a little better. Can you kind of summarize that, maybe read it out loud and just, I have a hard time understanding why we're here where we are today with this?
I couldn't hear the, the final statement you made.
I'm having a hard time understanding why we're being forced into this decision. So could you, could you read that conclusion and kind of summarize what are the alternatives? Because I, I think it's pretty stark.
Sure, so it basically, I'll summarize it, an annual maintenance contract with this vendor, you know, is required even if we were to, to change and move to a new software platform in the interim. And then basically, this is referencing back to the last time we moved ERP systems is that to make that type of change, the full procurement implementation takes two to three years at a minimum and would cost somewhere in the two point five to three and a half million dollar range. So it, that's just basically providing a summary because there was some questions about why don't we move away from this because of the utility billing issues? I think what we wanted to convey here is that, you know, utility billing, while an important and a problematic part of, of the software that we have had in the past, it's a much larger suite of software that handles everything I mentioned at the beginning of this, in addition to utility billing. So to, to change it out is a significant endeavor.
Right, okay. And so essentially, we're kicking the can down the road, more or less, because the alternatives really suck, which is essentially building your own or buying a comparable piece of software that might be just as inept. The question I have is, we, we've just eroded a ton of public trust and New World was part of that problem. And now we're spending time and energy, we have a new staff. And my, my gigantic global concern for the council and for the staff is if we keep using something that we know is inferior and causing us problems, and even with all the training in the world, it's still inferior and causing us problems. You know, at some point, you have to make a plan to stop kicking it down the road. And I don't have the answer to that, but what I would ask of the staff is, can we start looking at what maybe some neighboring cities, maybe some comparable cities are doing in terms of the programs they're using? And, and if we have to Montgomery everything, you know, does it make sense for us to invest three million dollars in self-developing our own program? I know that's a terrible cost, but sometimes you pay the piper. But I would like to know what the alternatives that the other cities are doing, because it's, it seems like it's a shame that we're going to go through eighteen months more of paying back thirty two thirty and still have this really inferior product that will hamper us. So does that, do you have, do you have my request, Mr. Epperson, about looking for some alternatives, maybe that we can discuss at a later time going forward?
I would support that as well, Mr. Epperson.
I think that's good direction. I think, I think the question ultimately is, how long do we ride with these guys and when is it time to cut bait? And, and, and yes, that can't be done overnight. It's got to be just like anything else that has to be planned and, and it's a project. I mean, at the end of the day, software is a project, so we have to plan that out. And I think, I think you're hearing that. Member Hernandez, you had something else to add?
I was just lending some support to member Kamkar's suggestion. And the only thing that I would add, or ask rather, is maybe of Dan to get an update. I think we had started making some small strides and getting some potential programmers on staff. And is this something that he thinks is doable in the future? If we wanted to go down that road and potentially explore doing something in-house? Or is that just way too beyond the scope that we've anticipated at this point?
Good question.
So I'll let Dan chime in, but I think, you know, any type of software package like this to, to stand up our own would be even more significant than, you know, going with a different vendor. There's just a lot of tie-ins, a lot of different things this does. And, you know, to have that kind of programming capacity, I just don't know that that's, that's feasible for us, but it's something we can address in a memo when looking at alternatives. Dan, anything to add there?
I know, just that most cities our size use something similar in nature. They typically do not program something this high-end internal.
So when you say cities, cities our size, are you just talking about population? Are you talking about subscribers on a utility system?
Both. You'd get like City of Houston, those types, that size, that potentially would build something, but anything lower than a large scale city, typically they'll go with something off the shelf. Typically that's, there were three vendors. It was New World, which was acquired by Tyler. Tyler had their own product. And changed names now it's Central Square, but that was the old HT platform. Those were the three big players in the government realm.
Okay, so it's not like a huge space with lots of competitors. It's pretty slim pickings as of right now.
Those are the three that always come to mind every time you put a request for proposal out.
Okay, well, Mayor, I'll go back to what I said earlier. I agree with member Kamkar, at least if we can start talking to some other cities, I'm sure that maybe, you know, there's something we can gain, at least from the conversations. If we find something that's great, if we don't, at least we did our due diligence. That's all.
Any other questions, comments? Ain't no one moving that direction. Madam Secretary, let's call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Kamkar, I'm sorry, Carbone?
No.
Member Kamkar?
No.
The motion carries four to two.
Okay, moving on, item number six, we'll back around to Mr. Orlando. Item number.
I'm sorry, number seven. I'm circling six as I said. Thank you.
Consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty twenty one dash five three, so moved.
Agreed.
We have a motion and a second, staff report?
I'm going to hand this one off to city attorney Darren Coker.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Before we get into this, I'll just remind council that the entire caption of this item has to be read. And in the past, I've read the caption for the council and then I have a council member, so move after that. So I'll be happy to do that. If you want me to go ahead and do that at this time and then I'll do the staff report after that.
Please do.
Okay. Yes, consideration, possible action resolution two thousand, two thousand twenty one dash fifty three, resolution, city council, city of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain, acquire fee, title interest, a sanitary sewer easement and a temporary construction easement on certain property for public infrastructure improvements, road and sewer, being tracks of land containing point three four six eight acre, fifteen thousand one hundred and six square feet, a point two five five four acre, eleven thousand one hundred and twenty five square foot and a temporary construction easement located within the HT and BRR company survey, abstract five four nine, Bressory County, Texas, and being a portion of lot fifty one of the Allison Ritchie Gulf Coast Home Company subdivision, section twenty four, recorded in volume two, page eighty nine of the Bressory County plat records, said point three four six eight and point two five five four acre tracks also being a portion of lot fifty one, recorded in the name of Newt, the Don, Etowah and Bressory County Parks File Number ninety five dash oh three eight two eight five for the construction and maintenance of public improvements on certain real property described herein, authorizing the city attorney or as designated or other city officials to take such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase or by the exercise of the power of eminent domain.
Remember Orlando stepped down?
So moved.
We have a motion.
Council, just to, to be clear on this item, this is, again, it's for the acquisition of a road, property for road improvements.
Do we have a proper second? I know we had to read it.
I, I thought there was a second, did someone?
Okay, did you, second?
So I heard somebody second.
Did you?
No, I was going to ask the question.
Okay. Not, we're not clear on who moved, so at this time, based upon my reading of that, could I get a so moved?
We had a, we had a motion from Mr. Carbone and a second of Mr. Little.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up. And again, we're, the, this is for the city to acquire a property for road right-of-way, sanitary sewer easement and a temporary construction easement. The property in question is located at the intersection of Harkey and Bailey Road. The acquisition of the property for these improvements is necessitated by a development agreement that we have for the Massey Oaks Development. In this particular case, all acquisition costs are being incurred by the developer with money that's been escrowed with the city. And there's, offer has been made to the property owner. Property owner has not responded with a counter offer. And so we're at a point now where we have no recourse but to go ahead and proceed with the eminent domain process. And we'll continue that effort to try to reach out to the property owner in the interim and hopefully we can get that resolved without having to go all the way through this process. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, does that complete your report? All right.
It does.
Any other comments or questions, concerns from council? Ain't none moving that direction? Madam Sec, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty one dash five three.
All right, moving to new business item number eight, Mr. Carbone, would you put that on the table, please?
Thank you, Mayor, consideration and possible action resolution R twenty twenty one dash twenty two, so moved.
We have a motion and a second, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This item was for the replacement of three fleet vehicles that have met our thresholds for replacement. We had one vehicle for parks, one for public works and one for the fire department. This is an item that was postponed from a previous meeting when there were some questions over the motor pool policy establishing our replacement schedules. We provided a memo with the basis for that and the information there. And then new, as we described in the memo, was to provide a vehicle data sheet with all vehicles that, that'll, that'll be purchased. So you're seeing that as part of the agenda item tonight. That vehicle data sheet shows the vehicle age, mileage or hours if it's equipment, a preventive maintenance schedule, frequency, the total maintenance cost to date, the age, as well as the percent of time that vehicle's available. And, and then a vehicle summary for any other pertinent data that. Um, and, and then a vehicle summary for any other pertinent data, uh, that should be, uh, shared and pictures. Um, so going forward, while we provided these tonight with this item, uh, what we plan to do is to use these, uh, vehicle data sheets in the budget process. So that all vehicles recommended for replacement in future budgets, uh, to ensure that there's a full understanding of what those vehicles are. Um, and, and why they're being recommended for replacement, uh, we'll have that included in that, uh, budget and why they meet that criteria. So, uh, moving forward, we'll have, uh, all that information available to you. So, uh, that concludes my report, and we'll be happy to answer questions.
Uh, any questions, comments from council?
Thank you for including all the, the background information, maintenance costs and pictures. Appreciate it.
Member Hernandez?
Mayor, I had, uh, made the motion, I believe, on this item at the meeting, and, uh, this is phenomenal information by staff. So I just wanted to commend them for the, uh, level of detail. This really helps to illustrate the need for these replacements, so I really appreciate the work.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing nobody in that direction. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Again?
Member Cam Carr?
Aye, he said aye.
Okay, Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-two.
All right, moving forward in the agenda, item number seven, matters removed from the consent agenda. So, Mr. Cam Carr, would you put item B as in boy on the table, please?
Consideration and possible action resolution number R two-zero-two-one dash three-eight, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, uh, a, uh, design contract, uh, with Charles D. Gooden Consulting Engineers, uh, for design of the transite waterline replacement in the South Corrigan subdivision. This is part of our ongoing recapitalization of our water infrastructure. And, um, I think of, of utmost important, uh, importance here, in addition to replacing that old infrastructure, is that there are several two-inch, three-inch, and four-inch, uh, water main pipes in that area. And we'll be not only replacing those, but upsizing those to meet our current standards of a minimum of six or eight inch, um, as required, um, water lines, which will, uh, increase and, and provide the, uh, adequate fire protection in that neighborhood as well as the new, new waterline infrastructure. That concludes staff report.
Okay, into, uh, questions, comments from council?
Yeah.
And Rowlands?
I don't wanna have that pulled, and, and number one, is anybody here from, uh, Charles or anybody with the company that's gonna do this design? I didn't think that we'd hang it around. And, uh, I guess, uh, Charles and then put this together and it showed, uh, two-point, uh, one-one-two-nine-twelve be the total cost. Who put the contingency in? Uh, was that the engineering firm that puts the contingency in?
Uh, Robert, take that question.
I apologize, uh, uh, Mayor Owens. One, uh, Mr. Gooden is online listening, uh, so he is present. So he is available if necessary. And two, uh, could you please, uh, which line item would you be referring to on the budget when you're talking contingency? So when we set up a project in the CIP budget, uh, by staff, that is then set up working with, um, our division, our end user. And we set that at the very beginning of the project. Now that'll amend as we go through the project, uh, when the designer is on board, as we continue to look through. And then as we head towards, uh, construction, and we'll be amending that, uh, project contingency as that goes along. But currently, when it's developed as a CIP project, we set that at twenty percent till we define what those unknowns are.
Well, that's what I was wondering, you know, the twenty percent contingency is awful high, Robert, uh, on there. I mean, you're talking about four-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty dollars. It's almost a third, uh, or a fourth of what the total contract is. I just, I don't know of anybody out there that puts a twenty percent contingency on a small contract like that.
Um, I apologize, sir, I'm trying to follow, but his contract is only a hundred and seventy-four thousand, and we're looking at a, um-
Well, that's the construction cost on it when it comes down. Uh, it was estimated construction cost at two-point-one million, a little bit over. But then the contingency added to it brought it up to two-point-five-three-five, which was four-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars, uh, contingency. I mean, you got a contract here of two-point-one million, and you're gonna add four-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand in there for the contingency, so you have twenty. That's, that's awful high.
So that's just an estimate? We don't have a contract for that at this point? This is just the engineering contract, so that's an estimate before anything's been designed?
We also, uh, councilmen, when they take a look at that, that's not a contingency that we fit into our budget. We only ask when they put together their information, what their aspect is. We use their, we use the base. And then our contingency is only twenty percent based off of that, um, and then rolling into it. A lot of times we don't use the engineer's estimate of their, of their contingency when we look at that. So we go through it, and then we also take a look at contingency, but we also have, um, design costs with, associated with construction materials, testing, et cetera, that we tie into our E as well.
I'm just looking at it, Robert, from that standpoint, uh, twenty percent contingency is extremely high. I mean, you know, it is. It's extremely high. I mean, you know, most of them, even Tex dot, you know, I think they, they backed off from fifteen percent that they had in there, and they backed down to ten percent of contingency.
And, and we do th- do that throughout the project as the project goes along.
That's, that's awful high on that. That's, that's the only reason I pulled it off. Nothing with, uh, Charles and then doing, doing the job. I mean, they're a good firm. Um, but, uh, I just saw that contingency in there when I was going through and reading that. That's, that's a high dollar.
Just so it's clear, that's our standard, uh, contingency before we've designed anything. Once we start working our way through thirty, sixty, ninety percent design, we start bringing that down. Where when we go to construction, it's a much lower contingency.
I mean, this is not my first deal of talking about contingency with our group.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Cam Carr? Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-eight.
All right, Member Little, would you put E as in echo on the table?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty-twenty-one dash five-two, so moved.
Second, Hernandez.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is for the, uh, a replacement of our traffic signal, uh, bucket truck. So our traffic signal maintenance crews utilize bucket trucks, uh, to maintain our traffic signals as well as streetlights. Uh, the existing trucks met the criteria for replacement. It's over ten years old and has had high maintenance cost and is often out of service. Um, we're actually currently renting a replacement for that so that we can stay operational at two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month. Um, we're buying this through a cooperative, uh, purchasing agreement to utilize the buying power of that cooperative. And, uh, so this will, uh, get our second, uh, crew back up with a, a new bucket truck. That concludes staff report.
Okay, uh, questions from council? Rowlands?
On, um, this one, that I asked, uh, on there, is, um, this a truck with, uh, I know it's a, um, two and a half ton, but I mean, it's, is that the boom in the bucket as a part of this?
It includes, yes, it includes the boom in the bucket. It includes the boom in the bucket, yes, sir.
How about the snowplow prep package? I just thought that's kinda odd.
I'm assuming that's something that comes standard on the vehicle, and we do not, you know, add the snowplow itself.
Um, how many of these bucket trucks do we have like that?
So, uh, this is one we've had, uh, for ten years, and then we, uh, when we added the second traffic signal maintenance crew in the last budget, we, um, bought a second bucket truck. So we have two total.
Yeah, I saw one out there. That's what I was wondering on the Owen, you, you're gonna come in and, and, uh, uh, auction that off. Are you gonna take that boom and, and, uh, bucket off? I mean, it'll come off the back of the truck, you know, in case you, you need it on another one.
I, I think, uh, the plan would be to auction it off as, when it, as one unit. Um, the bucket and the hydraulic system is the most problematic portion of those vehicles. And so it's the one that's driven the maintenance cost and the amount of time that's been out of service. So I don't know that it provides us any benefit to keep that portion of it.
I noticed on the chart that y'all had, I guess the highest expenditure was in twenty-nineteen, I believe it was. But anyway, the other showed it's, uh, readily available, uh, present date. This one that we're fixing to get rid of. But really, I just had the concern, you know, of, of this. Uh, most, you know, a lot of these other, uh, places, they would take the bucket and the boom off and replace it on another truck. Some later date if they needed it. So I didn't know how y'all-
I don't think we'd get much use out of it. It's been the problem with the existing vehicle.
Yeah, there was a, a call that wanted to know where, where to, uh, look at the auction and, and want to know if, if the boom and everything went with it. One of the contractors out here. Okay, all right, that's all I had.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, uh, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-two.
All right, moving to item, I as in Igloo. Member Owens, would you put that on the table, please?
I don't even have it in front of me, to be honest with you.
I get it, Mayor. Member Little?
Consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty-twenty-one dash five-seven, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is our annual plumbing contract that establishes unit prices as well as parts markup. Um, and it's used for normal, uh, repairs of, uh, our any plumbing within the, the city's facilities. And, uh, also emergency plumbing repairs. So during the February winter storm, uh, we had multiple facilities that required repairs. Um, and so we're just adding funds back to this contract so that we have the capacity, uh, throughout the remainder of the contract. And so, um, these expenditures we had to make during the winter storm will be submitted for insurance claims. And, uh, you know, we'll go through that process, and then anything remaining from that, we will submit through disaster recovery funds, uh, to make us as whole as possible through those processes. And so thi- this covers, I believe, this item as well, uh, uh, the same story, um, with the, uh, next item, uh, J. Uh, that's with our, our generator, uh, contractor, and then, uh, the last one, L, which was a disaster recovery contractor we brought onboard, um, as well to deal with all the winter storm, uh, issues we had.
All right, um, any questions, comments?
Only concern I had on here, and, and really is just some clarification, and, and did some of it then. It looked like that over this period of time for the couple of days of when we had the bad, uh, weather and everything, that, um, the city had, uh, pretty extensive damage, you know, in our facilities and our fire station, and also in the, um, uh, other areas. And I just wondered if, if we're gonna be able to get a report on actually how much damage was done. I mean, it seems like it's pretty extensive, you know, all across the city for the city facilities and what have you, and especially the generators and stuff like that.
Sure, so I, I think if you take these four items that are before us, that compiles all of the damage that was done, and the dollar figures associated with those. And what'll be submitted through insurance, and then anything that, that we do not, uh, recoup through that, we'll, uh, work with Joel to go, see if we can recoup it through disaster recovery funds.
Okay, all right, this one.
All right, any other questions, comments? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-seven.
Member Carbone, moving to item J, would you put that on the table real quick?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action resolution R twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-eight, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, similar to the last item, um, but this is for our annual generator contract that establishes unit pricing, uh, and parts markup cost, uh, used for our normal, uh, generator testing services, as well as maintenance of the generators and any emergency repairs. So again, we use this contract during the, uh, February winter storm to make repairs to multiple generators. Again, will be submitted through insurance as well as disaster recovery funds, and that concludes our report.
All right, moving to council questions, concerns, comments. Member Owens, you pulled this?
Yeah, I asked to pull it, and the reason I did is, is, uh, in this, several of the places that we had, there was, um, two events that, you know, on SWEAT, there was two visits, but out there, the first was, visit was about three or four hundred dollars, and the next one was a, a few thousand. Alice Plant was the same thing, and then also the Longwood. And so it seemed like during the course of this of, you know, and, and it was only one day apart. They'd go out, do the first one, and then the next day come out, and then it went from three to four hundred dollars up to two or three thousand, you know, and some higher than that, but those are the relocations, and I was just wondering on, on those. We'd have somebody out one day, and it'd cost us between three and four hundred dollars for them to come out. And then the next day after that, they had to go back to the same place, the ones I just, uh, uh, stated on there. And it went into the thousands of dollars the next time. And so I didn't know what would be, you know, what would be the problem if you come out one day, and it costs you between three and four hundred dollars, and the next day you had to come out again. I didn't know what the malfunction or if they just didn't do all the work on the first day that they went out. The second day, it was, you know, if you look at the, at the, on there, it, it, you have it on there showing how many thousands of dollars it cost for the second day. And there was three of them, uh, there repeated on the, on the second day that they come out.
Sure, so we had, um, you know, uh, several different, uh, well, you know, we, we've got about forty-seven generators. Um, you know, forty, forty-three of the forty-seven functioned well dur- throughout the event. Um, but some of them we had issues with, and, and, you know, there were different issues with them at different times. So, you know, we had, we had some issues with, uh, batteries, um, because of the cold. Uh, we had, uh, you know, where maybe we replaced the batteries with an initial visit. Then, um, later on, we had coolant links, leaks because the hoses and the, and the, where they tie in, we got a lot of shrinkage there with, with how cold it was. And, uh, started to lose coolant, so we had other times where they had to come back for that. Um, we had other failures like voltage regulators, coolant pumps, and alternator pulleys at different locations. So, you know, they were responding as we called them out to address issues. Some issues were easy to address. Some issues we had to have them back out for, um, and so they were more extensive.
Well, that's what the concern was. I mean, they came out one day and did something, and then I guess they were called out the next day. And it was four or five times the cost of what it was the first day that went out. So that, that, you answered it. That's what I was wanting to find out on those relocations.
I just, I'd thank staff for the communication, cause I mean, going back and looking through the emails and updates that council got during this time, you could clearly see that the issues, and truthfully, I expected this bill to be a little bit higher, um, with, with all the emergency calls. Um, I guess in the future, if we had them voices, we could throw behind there, and we can make the packet, you know, eight or nine hundred pages. But, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with this total.
Any other questions, comments? Member Little?
Aye.
Oh, no, did you? I agree. Madam Secretary, we call for the vote. I think Councilmember Little wants to go first.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-eight.
L on the table?
Thank you. Consideration, possible action resolution number-
Thank you. Consideration possible action resolution number R twenty-two-one dash six-zero, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This is authorizing a contract with E contractors and ratifying the emergency expenditures with that contractor. So a little bit different than the other contracts where we were amending tonight, where we have existing contracts. This is a disaster recovery firm that, that we brought in specific to some of the damage and the issues we had during the winter storm in February. And so they made multiple repairs to multiple city facilities, and again, to be funded through insurance and disaster recovery funds. That concludes up my report.
And the council questions? And Rowan's?
Yeah, this one caught my eye a little bit. You know, Fire Station Number Two had just walked things wrong. And then when the contractor hooked up the generator and hooked it up wrong, then that cost us another sixty-five thousand dollars in damages. And the only question I had is the contractor gonna pay for that, that damages that are caused by them hooking up the generator wrong? And second thing is, I don't think I'd let them come out there and hook up another one for us.
So as with the rest of this, this will go through the insurance process. And so there'll be an attempt to go with the contractor's insurance. And of course, you know, we'll have our insurance involved as well going, going after that. So it'll go through the insurance process to reimburse the city.
It just seemed that Fire Station Number Two, I mean, that's, that was a project from hell. There was a lot of stuff that, that went on. And when, when was that built?
Four years ago. Four years ago.
Four years? I mean, everything that can go wrong in a fire station, it went wrong in Fire Station Number Two. And I don't know if it's for the generator that had been put in incorrectly or whatever. But look at the information on there, and it's just extensive damage in Fire Station Number Two.
I guess this is why we carry, we, we require anybody who does work with the city to carry insurance.
Yes, sir.
This is, you know, so if anybody faults at providing insurance, this is why we do that.
Yeah. I don't think I'd invite the contractor back.
Yeah. Well, mistakes happen, and, you know, it's how you handle them that, that, you know, lousy's got good business again. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, just, just to follow up, it looks like this was, I guess, procured initially through a buy board. So looking through the bids, I know a lot of local Pearland-based companies that do the remediation. And is there a way to go out and do a pre-approval like we do for debris removal on an annual basis so that we've got some local vendors that are ready to go versus bringing some folks in from out of the city?
Yeah, I think that's something we can look at. We'll take a look at that and see what the options are there and bring something back.
Season's coming, so maybe we can get ahead of the game.
Thank you.
Just in case. Seeing no other questions, Madam Secretary, call for the vote on L.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr? Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty-two-one dash sixteen.
All right, moving forward, there's no other business before council. Last is to, no mayor council issues for discussion. Last on the agenda is adjournment. We'll adjourn at nine fifty-four PM.